Good evening. I would like to call to order the Kaiser City Council. It is Monday, November 1st, 2021, and ask our city recorder to please call roll.
Counselor Kohler?
Here.
Counselor Reed?
Here.
Counselor Herrera?
Here.
Mayor Clark?
Here.
Counsel President Smith?
Here.
Counselor Day?
Here.
Counselor Duran?
Here.
And Youth Counselor Coleman?
Here.
Thank you very much. If you are able, I would invite you to stand at this time, and I invite you all to join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all for joining us this evening, both here in council chambers and online. Tonight, we're going to start off with two special orders of business. November is a special month for a number of reasons, and tonight, we're going to recognize two special events for the month of November. We're going to start off with the Native American Heritage Month. And I would like to start off with a thanks to Sue Ann Reddick, who helped me with editing and recommendations for the drafting of this proclamation. Whereas the lands of the Willamette Valley, on which the people of the city of Kaiser reside, are the historic home of the Kalapuyas, ancestors to the members of both the confederated tribes of the Grand Ronde and confederated tribes of Salits Indians. And whereas many injustices, broken treaties, and exclusions of Native Americans have occurred since non-native peoples came into these lands, and we need to remember that tragic history and commit ourselves to a just and equitable future for all of our residents. And whereas the many cultural and ethnic communities now living in the city of Kaiser and the Willamette Valley benefit from knowing and celebrating the heritage, traditions, and accomplishments of Native Americans, and whereas the city of Kaiser wishes to acknowledge and honor all tribal nations and their ancestors. Now therefore, I, Kathy Clark, mayor of the city of Kaiser, together with the Kaiser City Council assembled in regular session, do hereby proclaim November 2021 as Native American Heritage Month. In witness whereof, I have here and to set my hand and cause the seal of the city of Kaiser to be affixed this first day of November 2021. And with that, we are going to be displaying this, and you're going to be seeing things on our Facebook page and so forth, and we invite all people who have information and ways of celebrating and commemorating the accomplishments of our Native American tribes right here, encourage you to do so. And one of the things we will be celebrating a little bit later this month is a ribbon cutting for a project over at Shamawa Station, which is a joint project of the confederated tribes of the Grand Ronde and the confederated tribes of Salits Indians. So working together, Shamawa Station is one of the many achievements. This is a small one in the vast scheme of their accomplishments, but we're happy to have this moving forward. So I'm going to sign this real quick. And this will go on display. The second thing we're going to do tonight is to honor Veterans' Day. Whereas the United States Congress passed a concurrent resolution on June 4th, 1928, calling for the observance of November 11th with appropriate ceremonies, and later provided in an act approved May 13, 1938, that November 11th should henceforth be, should henceforth be a legal holiday, and should be known as Armistice Day to commemorate the end of what we now call World War I. And whereas in order to expand the significance of that commemoration, and in order that a grateful nation may pay appropriate homage to the veterans of all its wars, and who have contributed so much to the preservation of this nation, the Congress, by an act approved June 1, 1954, changed the name of the holiday to Veterans' Day. And whereas the people of the city Kaiser thank, honor, and salute all of our community members who have answered the call to service to protect and defend our nation, now therefore, I, Kathy Clark, mayor of the city of Kaiser, together with the Kaiser City Council assembled in regular session, do hereby proclaim November 11, 2021, as Veterans' Day, and call on all the people of Kaiser to pay our respects to all who have served in the United States military services, which is their due, and to rededicate ourselves to the task of promoting an enduring peace, so their efforts shall not have been in vain. I will sign this, and I know traditionally, we have had a display here to honor the city employees who are veterans, and there are many within the Kaiser City employees who have served in our military services. And I want to give a special shout out, and a thanks, and honor, and salute the services of all the city employees who are veterans of the armed services. Thank you very much. And I will sign this. And we will include that also in our Facebook and other social media, and again, we invite all of you, and I see the walkers from the Volcanoes who are here tonight, and the patriotic tribute that has been done for how many years now at Volcano Stadium? Fifteen years. It is one of the nationally recognized events that thanks, honors, and salutes veterans in military service, and also those who have, you know, celebrate the memory of the people who have died in the wars in protecting our country. So I want to thank the Volcanoes and Jerry Howard, and also our community for supporting our military veterans and active service members. At this time, I'd like to go to committee reports, and going through all of our blue sheets here, so if you give me a second. This is public testimony, public testimony, traffic safety bike ped, Wayne, where are you at? Hey, good to see you, sir.
Thank you, Mayor. It's good to be here. I have a new hip. I've had it for almost three weeks now, so everything's going well.
Oh, that's wonderful.
So you're a real hippie now?
I've been called a hipster. I'm with, I'm going to represent the Traffic, Bike Ways, Pedestrian Safety Committee. And we met October 21st. We had a discussion about the multi-use path near Cummings Elementary School, and the discussion was that there's been a few cars parking on that multi-use path, but it doesn't appear to be a problem. Carol Dorfler reported from West Kaiser Neighborhood Association that the kids are able to get around the few cars that are parking on that multi-use path. Our discussion was, do we need signs that say no parking? And the decision at the time, right now, is we don't need those signs that say no We have some bigger issues that we're looking forward to. This would be SCATS project solution. Salem-Kaiser Area Transportation System is what SCATS represents. And we've come up with several ideas of projects that we could do. There are some timelines to get these projects going. Preliminary deadline would be, our preliminary application date would be December 1st, 2021. The final date would be February 25th, '22. And we have some projects that we're working on, but we're not quite ready to present these projects. We do have some ideas. One of the ideas was to take some existing signs, traffic speed signs, and put a LED ring of lights around each sign to let people know that, just to bring attention to the sign. The sign won't tell them how fast they're going, it won't tell them if they're going too fast, it'll just bring attention to the sign. And there's about five different locations that that might work. And...
May I interrupt real quick? Do you have the list of those locations, and can you email them to Mr. Lawyer for his review, please?
Yes, I do. The Dearborn Northeast, Alder Drive Northeast, McCloud Lane Northeast, and Cummings Lane North, and Verda Lane Northeast between Shamawa and Lock Haven.
All around schools, pretty much?
Yes.
Perfect, all right, thank you.
Okay. We've, we had some other ideas, project ideas, that we could use for the SCATS project identification. We heard there's money going to become available for 2024 through 2029. These funds are ARPA, or no, APRA?
Yeah, ARPA.
ARPA, okay. I don't know what ARPA stands for, but...
Oh, acronym. All right, acronym quiz. American Recovery and Prosperity Act.
Okay, very good. Anyway, so we do want to encourage the city of Kaiser to do some projects, to claim some of that possible available, I've heard $8 million might be possible for that timeframe. So we're still trying to define traffic type projects for that, that might be good. One of those ideas might be a pedestrian island on, on, let's see, Lock Haven? Well, yes, pedestrian island on Lock Haven, near McNary.
Gotcha.
First, we talked about a crosswalk, but then if this... First, we talked about a crosswalk, but then if this money does become available, a bigger project would be a pedestrian island, make it more safe for kids crossing the street and getting to school. It'd be Lock Haven at McNary. The, our police representative, Officer Lade, he suggested that would be a good location for a pedestrian safety island. So the Traffic Safety Committee, we're gonna, we are, we have, we do have a prioritized list of sidewalk connectivity projects, and there's at least four of those that have, that we've determined to have a high priority and are that are also on the Traffic to TSP, Traffic Safety Program, or Plan. Do you see that? I'm standing up all by myself. See that? That's really all I have.
Great, questions? Counselor Day.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just to follow up on what Mr. Frye said, that the idea that the pedestrian island over there on Lock Haven, apparently what's, and this was what Sergeant Lade brought up to us, apparently people drop off their children on the north side of Lock Haven, and then they cross the street. So the idea was if you put a pedestrian island there, given how wide Lock Haven is, that they would have, that people crossing the street would have a place basically to stand, you know, dodge traffic, I guess. That was, I mean, I'm being facetious, obviously, but that was the general idea, just to kind of fill in the blanks there.
Right, and I, over the years, that has been recommended by a number of parents and administrators because there is a connectivity issue in that space, especially during pickup and drop off. Counselor Reed?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So just to clarify, is this like the one on Lancaster by Shemeketa as far as that pedestrian island? So it would have blinking lights when people, is that part of it, or are we just talking the island at this point?
We haven't defined it that far yet.
Okay. Because I know that there has been, there has been talk about, you know, a crosswalk where pedestrians can, you know, a striped crosswalk where pedestrians can push a button and then the lights go off.
Yeah, there's one of those in Salem.
Yeah.
Near Lancaster. And that would be the ideal version.
Yep, that's exactly the example that was given when they were discussing.
Okay, that's kind of what I was wondering, is if I'm picturing it correctly.
So I do have, and thank you, that would be something, once again, I know Mr. Lawyer's taking notes as far as feedback on that recommendation. The other, as you mentioned around Cummings Elementary, I was contacted by a neighbor, and his email is actually in our written comment tonight regarding people parking and stopping on the east side of Delight, right by Cummings Elementary, and it is indeed already a no parking zone. So that entire block from Cummings to Evans? Or is that Judas? I can never remember which one's which. Anyway, the first one is all no parking anyway. What I don't know is if there is Judas. So is there a way to better market because it's gravel? It's not clear, and people just stop and drop off their kids, or they park, wait for their kids to get out of school, and that's the no parking zone for a really, really, really good reason. So, you know, in terms of the safety around Cummings, I know you talked about the multi-use path, but that one is actually more immediate to the school, and if there's options or just something that would help us out, is that something that was discussed, or should I just look to Mr. Lawyer to come back with what can or can't be done?
I don't have any information on that.
Okay, so, all right, thank you. That would be in response to the written comment we received from Mr. Darryl Fuller, who moved into our neighborhood last year and has people parking in front of his house now that school's back in session. All right, any other questions for Mr. Frye? All right, thank you so much, and we're so glad you're doing better. Look forward to seeing you back on your bicycle. That's all I have for committee reports. Did I miss somebody who intended to sign up for committee reports? Okay. Seeing none, public comment this time is provided for citizens to address the council on any matters other than those on the agenda scheduled for public hearing. We have no public hearing scheduled this evening. Under written public comment, we received the email I just referred to from Mr. Darryl Fuller regarding Delight Street, from Carol Dorfler on the DEI Committee, Kathy Lincoln, Community Engagement Committee, and Carolyn Holman, Community Engagement Committee Resolution. All four of these individuals are residents of Kaiser. So those are included on the dais, and they will be included in the record. For public comment, just to remind everybody that as I call you up, you'll be asked to state your name and city of residence for the record. You have five minutes. Your turn to talk, ours to listen, and if we need to refer something to staff for further information, we will do so, and again, to direct comments to the chair. So in no particular order, looks like everybody is here for the same thing except, yeah, eight. Okay, it looks like everybody's here for one item, and that is for Administrative Action Item 8A, so this will actually be timely because we'll get your comments, and then we'll go into 8A. So no particular order. Michael Baze, and on deck will be, no pun intended, Dave Bauer.
Michael Baze, I'm a citizen of Kaiser, live in 1705 Bryan Court, and I'd like to yield five minutes of your time, Madam Mayor. Okay, so, I'm Mike Baze. I'm actually just retired from the military, 20-year veteran, two combat tours, so Veterans Day, thanks, I appreciate you guys' support.
Thank you, sir.
I represent a group called Kaiser Baseball. What is Kaiser Baseball? A lot of people don't know. Kaiser Cal Ripken and Kaiser Little League have combined into one group called Kaiser Baseball. We're in talks about, with the other groups in town about coming all the way together, so that's a good thing. You know, I, as president of Kaiser Baseball, totally support the Walkers. I believe that they do good things for this community, and we have lots of plans for the kids in that complex that will be really, really great. Back in the day, like 2008, we had 900 kids in our program. Now between all three, we got about 450. Okay? Splitting's what drove people away. We're trying to bring it all back together and rebuild, and make a positive experience for the youth of this town. We want that 10-year-old kid that's never thrown a ball before to learn how to play baseball, you know, and not think he can't. And I really believe that Mickey shares that vision with me, and Jerry, and I think it'd be a really positive mood forward for this city. Now I know obviously some people are against it, and they have their own agendas, I absolutely believe that, but the people that are volunteering their time, over 40 to 80 hours a week, like many of the gentlemen in this room, that have dedicated it to these kids, like Mr. Lawyer, who was my coach, and Councilman Herrera, who was my other coach, and, you know, these guys were mentors to me, and they made me believe in myself when I was an uncoordinated kid, he didn't know he was left-handed until he was eight, you know? So, they really helped me out. But there's kids out there like me that just want to play, and play some rec ball and escape, especially after the rough last year we had with the pandemic and everything else. This could be a really positive thing for our youth. And to go with a local group that grew up in this city, that cares about the kids in this city, a guy that volunteers his time to work with kids outside of the business like Mickey does, it's pretty amazing. And that's something special, guys. You can't really put money on that, you can't put a value on it, right? We can try, but the real value is community and the fact that we care. So that's really all I gotta say. I really hope you guys will do the right thing, and what's best for these kids. Thank you.
All right, are there any questions? Thank you so much. Mr. Dave Bauer, and on deck will be, glasses, hopefully I have this right, Phil Bailey? Okay, all right, Mr. Bauer.
Madam Mayor and Council, my name's Dave Bauer. Been a citizen for the community, for Kaiser Community for about, well, I'm 72, so that's a long time, I guess. I've been involved in the community for a long time, and I was president of Kaiser Little League for two years. We were involved many more than that, when we stood and watched one daughter here, one daughter here, and a son there, and that field was designed so we could do that, and it was a great place. As president of Little League for two years, we had almost 1,100 kids. We had four divisions, we had junior, we had major, junior, senior, and big league. And for two years in a row, there was only one coach that didn't take the division. And I don't know where he moved off to, but he was exonerated, I think, for not making it, so. Back when Kaiser Little League was pretty much on top of the game anywhere in the valley. If you know the history of the fields, you know the Dirty Dozen. They were a group of incredible volunteers that virtually built the fields with, from the ground up with the help of the Oregon National Guard. The semi-trailer was the first fieldhouse or storage unit for all the gear. Over the years, fences were repaired, water and power improved, and the field maintenance was done by moms and dads. Donations of money and equipment came from the Kaiser Community. The current fieldhouse concession stand, restrooms, the current fieldhouse concession stands and restroom were built by volunteers. I think there's signs, I haven't been out lately, but there were signs that we made that listed everybody that helped. I've read the Kaiser Little League Manager Contract proposed by staff, and I only have one grave concern. The manager in the contract may change the names not only on Kaiser Little League Park, but each field. Those fields were named with great thought and dedication by a lot of people in the organization that built the park. Although council has a final approval, according to the contract, this completely against the motto of this city that was built on pride, spirit, and volunteerism. Just because a person or business may not be here anymore, it doesn't mean we should change the name. Maybe you should change Sam Markaway, or Bob Newton Park, or Bob Simon Council Chambers. I ask you have staff deduct the clause in the contract and bring it back for approval. Thank you for consideration, and thank you for your volunteerism as a counselor. I'd answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, Mr. Bauer, and thank you for your longtime service to our community, and many of our children will recognize you for your many years in another role. You have raised a very good question, and this is something that was addressed in this staff report, and I would like to go to Mr. Johnson to talk about that particular clause because it has been discussed, and we shared the determination that historically named facilities shall retain that name. Mr. Johnson?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yes, we made quite a bit of changes to this section, to Section 10. As Mr. Bauer points out, it does require council approval, and it says in the sole discretion of the council following recommendations from the Parks Board. The historical nature part, I did not put in directly because I'm not sure how to define that, so I would assume it would be on a case-by-case basis. Having been in this town and around Little League fields for many years, I don't have quite the history that Mr. Bauer does, but I would expect that a change of the name of the field would be a pretty big deal, and the historical nature will come out at that time, so that's, that was why I wrote it that way.
But I might also point out that in the discussion, in legislative history for this, for this contract, it is clear that historical names are ones to be left in place, and it was the others that are sponsor-based that were open for recommendation to the Parks Board for naming. So it would be different, but your point is extremely well-taken, and we'll make sure that that commitment to the historic naming, which has been, it's important to honor and salute and celebrate the people who have made this community the strong community it is. Questions? Counselor, oh, I've got one down here. Counselor Herrera?
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you.
And thank you...
Microphone? Not try it, no? I went from too hot to there we go. Counselor Reed's gonna share.
First of all, thank you for all your service, Dave, and thank you for being one of the Dirty Dozen. I know, I know, I know, and I'm on a mission to try to figure out where everybody's at, and there's a lot of history there. Your concern that you brought up was brought up by myself, actually initially in the first meeting, and the reason is because, you know, and actually I stated the fact I would talk to Mrs. Cox, she writer, by go to Ray Cox Field, my relationship with Jim Reiman, it goes on and on, including my relationship with the Bowers and all the work you guys have put in there. And I think that's been sort of addressed, but I, as soon as I thought about that, everybody says the fieldhouse, I wasn't worried about the fieldhouse, I swear. I'm thinking more about the historical stuff, and I appreciate you bringing that up because coming from you, it means a lot more than coming from me, obviously. But thank you very much for that.
You yourself have been quite involved with that, over the years.
Thank you very much for all your work.
As much as anybody else. And just to, just to correct, I was not one of the Dirty Dozen.
Well, in my book, you were.
Anyway, and I thank you for that. My only concern is you're leaving the opening.
Yeah.
And, and that's, that's the concern. And I know the council has final approval, but you're leaving the opening. And if you didn't have that, I would, I would, I personally, as well as many, many other volunteers of this community, would appreciate that closing, so.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate that. Phil Bailey, and after him will be Brad Arnsmeyer. Thank you for joining us.
Thank you for having me. Again, Phil Bailey, citizen of Kaiser for about the past five or six years. 12 or 13 years ago, when I started working in the Kaiser Community, I didn't think I'd really ever care much about a bunch of grass and dirt that was, you know, over near me by where I was working, but since I've moved here and had several children, an 11-year-old who eats, sleeps, and breathes baseball, and a seven- and four-year-old son who wants to emulate their big brother, I now find myself there much, much, much more. In the same amount of time, I've also gotten to know the Walkers very, very closely, helping them in financial and real estate matters, as well as just getting to know them on a personal level. My children also do lessons with Mickey out after school once or twice a week, and have seen great improvements in their overall playing ability. But with that being said, getting to know them also allows me to realize that they're also going to do a very good job, in my opinion, when it comes to the overall maintenance of the facility. If you spend any amount of time there, it's very evident that there's a lot that needs to be done, just when it comes to bleachers, the dugouts, to the field, that times can get to be pretty bad, and they have the means, the know-how, the staff to make sure that all that stuff gets taken care of. I am young enough to hope that, you know, 20 or 30 years from now, I can have an opportunity to say that I've spent a lot of time and effort and money to be and do my part to make the fields better, but at least in the meantime, I know Mickey, especially at the age that he is, will be able to put decades and decades of time and effort into doing everything that I think we as a community who have children who want to play baseball and softball will be able to see happen.
Thank you so much. Any questions? Appreciate it, thank you. Mr. Arnsmeyer, and then we will leave this topic and go to Chamber. So Cory's on deck.
Are you saying you can save the best for last?
Oh.
I hope so.
We'll go with that.
Perfect. Ladies and gentlemen, my name is Brad Arnsmeyer. I am currently... I am currently, sadly to say, no longer a resident of Kaiser. I now reside in Omsville as of earlier this year. But Kaiser was my home for many, many years. It is near and dear to my heart, and this community means everything to me. I spent about eight years as a board member for Kaiser Little League, two of those years as president. There's a couple of presidents in here from different organizations, so I certainly understand everything that goes into it. Amount of time, effort, and the dedication that we have to the kids in respective communities. In my case, it was the city of Kaiser and the kids of this community. Being a part of the board of Kaiser Little League the last, I don't know, 10, 11 years, also means that you're a servant of the city. And the number of hours are untold that I gave to this community and to this city in order to try and provide the greatest opportunity for the kids of this community to have a positive and safe experience. We went through the RFP process a handful of times during my time as a Little League board member. What I am about to say, it's not all positive. And frankly, I'm a little disappointed that I'm seeing the process play out the way that it is. And the Walkers have been a good partner for this community for a long time, but I'm not sure that that's the solution that we need for this community. The notion that a penny of profit should ever be taken from that complex for any reason is, it's not something that I would ever want to see. Every penny that is ever generated at that park should go back into the fields and into the kids. What we did when I was there on the board, you know, when we had the money come in from the concession stand, anything that we were able to keep went back into the leagues to keep fees down, to make it affordable, to make sure the kids could continue to play out at that complex. The other half of the money all went back into that park, went into the playing services. We replaced fences on Fields 1, Field 2, Field 3, Field 5, Field 7. We bought scoreboards. The amount of money that we raised and invested to benefit this community out there was enormous, and I'm very, very proud of what we did. We also did that with the help of you, and for that, I say thank you. And for this, and for the members of Rotary that might be in this room as well. We couldn't have done it without those folks. But there has to be a different solution. What that solution is, I don't know. I'm no longer a member of this community officially, just as an umpire during the weeknights and on weekends. That's my Little League involvement now, calling balls and strikes and getting yelled at incessantly. And I just hope you find a good solution. The Walkers may have very good intentions. But the process was just, it was an interesting process just from afar. And I won't get into anything else other than that. But I'll leave my comments at that, and I'll say thank you very much for the time this evening. And wherever the solution ends up being, I hope that it's going to be great for this community because this community deserves it.
Thank you, and I do want to thank you for the tremendous work you put in as a Little League board member. And anybody who hasn't done that work has no idea the humongous number of hours that you eat, sleep, and breathe that, that work. So thank you. Questions? Counselor Kohler?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Not necessarily a question, but a comment. Thank you, Brad, for all the time and effort you put in with the Little League Task Force that we had together the last two years. I got to work with Brad, I appreciate the time and effort and insight. Thank you.
Thank you.
Other questions? Looking, looking, looking. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And Omsville's lucky to get you. All right, before we go into Item A, let's back clean up here. Pun intended. Cory Filardo, let's talk holidays.
Hi, everybody. I'm Cory Filardo with the Kaiser Chamber of Commerce, the executive director, and I live in Kaiser.
Thank you.
I'm here to share about all the events and then hopefully get approval for the permits and all the goodies that come with that. So if you want me to start with that, I'm happy to share about all the events first, or whatever you.
If you want to give us a rundown, because this is the opportunity on camera to give us a quick list and direct people where they can get more information.
Sure. Okay, so starting next week, on Monday, we'll be delivering our holiday giving tags to businesses around Kaiser, where you can go and collect a tag to purchase a gift for our holiday giving program. And I'll get to that when I come over to December. But that starts next week on Monday. On Thanksgiving morning, from 8:00 to 10:30, we'll have our Turkey-Dash Pajama Party, where you're encouraged to go over to our website and register for the run. It's $30 for adults and $20 for youth. You get a fun commemorative mug and shirt for participating in the run. And then we have some prizes for fastest male, female, child, best dressed group, and most festive pajamas. So don your best PJs and come join us. And the prizes are pies from Willamette Valley Pie Company. Coming up on December 7th, we have our annual Christmas tree lighting that will take place on Wallery Plaza, and it will be from 6:00 to about 7:00. We'll have some caroling, cookies, hot cocoa for everybody. And our favorite Jolly Old Elf will be joining us. And we'll just have a great time. And I'm pretty sure I've got Whittaker Middle School Choir on the hook to come down and lead us in some Christmas carols this year. So another fun event that we will have the week of December 6th is our holiday giving program, where we'll collect all the gift tags that you've purchased gifts for back. We'll sort them, wrap them, create food boxes, and then deliver those on December 11th from 9:00 to noon, where we ask community members to come down to the Kaiser Lions Club over at 4100 Cherry and pick up a delivery and take it out to a family, community, community, let me get my words right. A family in the community that's needing that extra support. We're hoping to be able to support a lot of children. So if you know a family that might need the extra help, you can give them our number down at the Chamber, and we'll get them signed up, or encourage them to talk to their CSOC or counselor at their Kaiser School, and we'll get them all the support that they need for that. And then the evening of December 11th, we'll have our Jingle Dash, which is another fun run. That starts from the Kaiser Chamber, goes down, I can't remember which way it goes, so sorry. It goes down to Boucher's, then back down to Abbey's, and then ends at the Kaiser Chamber. And the theme of the whole holiday parade is Songs of Christmas. So we're, we are going with Run, Run Rudolph for the Jingle Dash theme. So you'll be able to dress up like your favorite reindeer and join the run. And then, following the run, we have the Kaiser Holiday Lights Parade, starting at 7:00 PM, finishing up hopefully around 9:00. And we'll have a great celebration of all the Christmas songs. And I've heard there's some really great floats coming our way. That's all that's going on with us.
Easy peasy, right? All right, thank you so much, Cory. Really appreciate that rundown of what's happening. And the website to get more information would be?
KaiserChamber.com. And you can always take a look at our Facebook page, too. We have a Kaiser Holiday Lights Parade Facebook page, and then a Kaiser Chamber Runs page, where you can find all that information as well.
Thank you. So Counselor Kohler?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mr. Flora, thank you for being here.
You're welcome.
Just wanted to verify a couple things. The tree lighting was which day?
It's December 7th.
December 7th at?
6:00 PM.
6:00 PM. And then the Jingle Dash is at?
6:00 PM.
On the 11th?
On the 11th.
Now, there's some other stuff going on earlier on the 11th. You don't want to talk about that?
I did.
Okay, is there anything the community needs to help you with in preparation for that?
Are you talking about the wrapping and the sorting?
Yeah.
Yes. So we can have volunteers come join us on December 8th for gift wrapping of all the presents that we receive from the community members. We're starting a little earlier this year so that folks who like to go to bed at a normal time can come and join us. Or if you're a teen and want to come down and do some volunteer hours, we would gladly take you on for that. And then December 9th, we'll be doing food sorting and creating the food boxes that will go out to the families. And again, we're starting that a little earlier this year for the same reasons, because I want to go to bed before, you know, 1:00 or 2:00.
Good, good plan. Also, we get opportunity for more people who can volunteer for one night or two nights.
Absolutely.
As they would like to do. And as I understand, we're going to be able to serve more families this year than we ever have.
That is my goal, yes. So if you've heard about families in your neighborhood, or maybe it's family that's never needed help before, and they're a little nervous about asking for help, it's really easy, just give them my phone number, and I'm happy to support them along the way. If they don't want to share that information with their counselors, I'm happy to take that information and and get them the support they need. It's not about the fact that they're asking for help because they're poor, or they don't know, or anything like that. It's about the fact that they have a community that they can rely on to make this the best Christmas. So we really want to make that happen for everybody.
Thank you. Counselor Herrera, and then I'll circle back to Youth Counselor Coleman.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Cory, I'm sure you've done this before, because you've worked with the, I'm sure you've done this before, because you've worked with the elementary school, everybody has a CSOC.
Yes.
Kennedy, I know that you're familiar because in the past you've worked with him. Are you in contact with all the CSOCs, if they can identify?
I am. I am in touch with everybody. We are having some difficulties with the responsiveness of families. It's an uncomfortable situation for some to ask for help, and there's no stigma around asking for help. We're a community that shows up for one another, and that's just what we're trying to do. So we don't want there to be any, like, red tape or anything like that for anybody to cross over. So we're happy to take phone calls at the Chamber as well. But Kennedy always shows up, we're always happy to support them. They're great volunteers back with the Chamber, and we love supporting Kennedy.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Yeah.
Youth Counselor Coleman?
I just have a quick question. So for the gift wrapping at the Lions Club, what time will that be at?
We're going to start at 4:00 PM.
And are you going to need volunteers for the food boxes as well, or no?
Yes.
Yes. What day will that be?
That will be the 9th.
The 9th?
Directly the day, the next day, yeah.
Okay, from, at what time?
4:00 to when we're finished. And it's hard to give a finish-by time because I'm not going to say you have to stay till 2:00, but some of us might. Another thing I wanted to add on to the gift wrapping, if you could bring a couple rolls of wrapping paper and tape and your own scissors, so that we're kind of minimizing the touch and the sharing, so that we're able to support folks who are a little bit still nervous about COVID, that would be great.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Okay, Counselor Kohler?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Youth Counselor Coleman asked the question, you said we're going to start a little earlier, but there wasn't the time. So thank you.
So sorry. All right, thank you so much, and thank you for helping lead the effort to serve as many people in our community as possible.
My pleasure.
As Kaiser shows up.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. That is everybody I have signed up for public testimony. Is there anyone else present who would like to address the council before we go into administrative action? All right. We will then go to administrative action, Item 8A, which is Resolution Authorizing the City Manager to Sign Park Management Agreement with For the Love of the Game, Inc. City Manager?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm going to turn this over to the City Attorney, Shannon Johnson, who has done, I believe, some really good work in putting together the proposed contract.
Thanks, Wes, Madam Mayor and Counsel. In senior packet, we have attached a redlined version of the management contract. Those red lines represent the changes from when council last looked at this in September. And I kind of highlighted some of those changes, not all of them, in the staff report. The naming fees and sponsorship section in Section 10, we changed so that any naming fees for the complex or the fields, which would be more substantial than the other sponsorships or whatever, the net proceeds from that would be held by the city for dedicated use at the field, so the city wouldn't be able to just use it as general fund money, but the city would be able to hold that, those funds. Sponsorship fees would be held by the manager, but have to be used, obviously, for field and operations. I also took out the section about the manager retaining net revenue due to the fact that the manager, For the Love of the Game, is a nonprofit company. And so with those changes, we sent the clean version of this red line version to the Walkers, and they have signed the agreement, and the clean version is attached to the resolution. And I'm not going to read through the entire staff report. The mayor sent us four questions dealing with the level of park maintenance, which Mr. Lawyer and Robert Johnson answered in the staff report. And then Tim Wood answered the question about reporting requirements. We have a clause in there regarding the, let me read it exactly. It's an income statement and balance sheet, and the opportunity to do audits or get further financial papers. The third question had to do with a conflict of interest, possibility between the Walkers entity, which is called For the Love of the Game, the nonprofit entity, and the Volcanoes organization. I can't really comment on any perceived conflict of interest, because I can only analyze legal issues. The legal issue with regard to the Oregon statutes only has to do with government officials. Because the group is not a government official, there's no legal conflict of interest statement or issue. It's up to the, kind of the eye of the beholder, if you will, with regard to any possibility of impropriety with regard to the Walkers running the Volcanoes operations, same time they're running the Little League fields, as I pointed out in the staff report. One could take a more critical eye there and think that the Walkers might steer business towards the Volcanoes that could go to the Little League fields. I would think those users would be different, but they might be the same. The flip side of that, as I pointed out, is it could be a complementary use, too, with regard to a large tournament, could use both facilities perhaps. For example, the beginning part of the tournament played at the Little League fields, the championship played at the Volcanoes perhaps. I mean, it could work either way there. And then about changing the contract in the future, that's up to mutual agreement of the parties. There is an out clause with a one-year notice after two years for a total of three years would be the minimum amount of time that either party could ask to get out. Other than that, any amendments to contract would have to be mutually agreed, and it'd be up to the council as far as what kind of public process you may want to have on that. So we have the resolution before you, if you want to take that direction. We have three choices for you. You can adopt the attached Resolution Authorizing the City Manager to Sign the Agreement. You could restart the request for proposal process. Or you could fund and operate the facility with additional city employees. If you wanted to look at that route, there'd be a lot of questions to get into. And I guess the first option with regard to attached resolution on the agreement, I guess there's a sub-option there, is if you want any last-minute changes to the contract, we'd be glad to discuss those. If you feel like you want to go forward with it, but you want to make some more changes to the contract that didn't come up last time, we obviously could look at doing that option. Excuse the frog in the throat here. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
All right, thank you very much. I'm going to go down the line and see if anybody has questions. I'm going to start with Counselor Duran. No questions, Counselor Day?
I did have a question on Section 13 on termination. It says this agreement may be terminated upon two-year written notice given by one party to the other. But then it says notice cannot be given it says, "Notice cannot be given prior to November 1, 2023." So that would seem to me, you said three years, that would seem to me to lock us into four years.
Yeah, I see that, Counselor Day. I have to admit, I'm confused by that.
Because I thought that it was three years, is what we talked about.
Section 13, yes.
Section 13.
Yes, 1-3.
Oh, no, I agree. I think your math is correct, Counselor Day, in terms of the math, but that is not what I recall. So I'm kind of glad you caught that. The original discussion at one point was a year and a half. Mr. Lawyer pointed out that he wanted closer to two years, but my recollection was the, I thought the direction was it was two years to kind of give a chance to see how it goes, and then a one-year notice. So, and I thought that's what the discussion was. So I think that that probably should be changed. Is that, everybody else has that same recollection?
That's, I think, by and large, yeah.
My recollection was it was 18 months.
18 months?
Okay, but that means...
That's right. That's what I thought, too. I thought it was 18 months in my mind.
Yep. The original, the original discussion was 18 months. Mr. Lawyer is whispering in my ear here. It's a loud whisper. And he indicates that if it was something where the staff was, where the city was going to take it on, he believes that two years would be a more appropriate time than one year. The discussion at one point was 18 months, a year and a half. So I think what happened is the two years got put in there, but it was, it was after two years into it. And my understanding was it was supposed to be two years into with a one-year notice. So I think that's an issue that we're going to have to deal with on what the council wants to do. The Walkers have been very amenable to the changes in the contract, and I don't want to speak for them, but I think, you know, they would obviously consider anything you wanted to change. Again, from Bill's perspective, one year is just simply not enough time to get ready to take it over if that would be the alternative. The flip side of that is, and again, it's up to the council to decide this, is one year enough to decide if things are going well? So one year plus a two-year notice, that only gives somebody one year. So you're kind of stuck between Mr. Lawyer's request that two years would be a more appropriate time versus the other. Or just stick with the total of the four years, which is not what I advertised to you folks, and I apologize for that. That was my recollection.
So Counselor Day, may I follow up on your comment? And that is, part of this being logistically with the city, should a change occur, perish the thought, but also would have to go through the budget process. Is that correct?
That's correct, yes.
So that would...
The timing is difficult.
The timing would be very difficult to go into a budgetary, budgetary planning, because that would not then be approved unless it was supplemental until the following fiscal year.
Yeah, the baseball schedule generally doesn't work well with the fiscal year.
All right. Mister, Counselor Day, if I'm following up on your catch here, is it okay to pursue this? I'm going to have Mr. Lawyer comment on that. Okay. Mr. Lawyer.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. One year is just not enough time for us to...
Try again.
It was on.
There we go.
One year is just not enough time for the city to create the job descriptions, go through the hiring process, and all of that that it takes to enact this kind of an operation. 18 months, I think we could do it. Two years is my preference. But, so, just to give you that information. We could live with 18 months, but a year is just not long enough.
Okay.
And I think that that's where the error occurred, and I'll take blame for that, is it started with two years with a one-year notice. And Mr. Lawyer impressed upon me that, that two years was more appropriate, but I don't think I communicated that fact and had forgotten that it, and that did not come from the Walkers, is my recollection. So I think that that's how that occurred.
All right, so we will, Counselor Day, are you good for the moment?
Well, I just want to make sure that in Section 13 of the contract, the second sentence that says, "Notice cannot be given prior to November 1, 2023," is changed to 20, I guess it would be 2022. Is that right?
Four?
Well, it's up to council. I think, I think the discussion initially was whether it was appropriate for either party to make that decision after only one year in it. And that's, the original discussion was two years, and then the question became, that's when you would give notice, but how long the notice period would, obviously, morphed a bit. So again, if council feels that you want to review it after one year and then decide with a two-year notice, you can, you can do that. You could, I'm trying to visualize the calendar in my head, back to your point, Madam Mayor, about fiscal years, et cetera. It's a year and a half at the end of November. That still doesn't work very well. Well, actually, it does, because you could, you could, if notice was given in November of a year, you could start planning for it, and then the following beginning, before the fiscal year begins, start working towards a solution financially in that budget year, which would take effect, now it'd be one more year.
Under that scenario, then the notice, the termination clause would never work. Because if we give notice in November of 2023, or they give notice, one of the parties gives notice, by your analysis, then that wouldn't work for us in terms of our budget process.
Yeah, and I'm thinking out loud, you're right, Counselor Day, and the one year doesn't work either. So it'd almost have to be two years, I guess. I mean, you could still work on it, it just wouldn't jive correctly calendar-wise.
Correct.
Exactly. I mean, you could still work on that calendar in advance, but you wouldn't be able to actually pull a trigger on it because of the way the calendar fell.
Well, you can change the, pardon me, Madam Mayor.
Yeah, please, Counselor Day.
You can change the dates from November 1 to November 30, to June 1 to June 30. And that coincides with our budget process, and it's the same number of days, 30 days.
Mr. Lawyer has a comment.
From a budgeting standpoint, if we were notified in any given year, November 1st, we would have time to put together information, at least close enough information for about, if I counted right, about seven months of a fiscal year to have to fund the operation of that complex, okay? We could get numbers close enough in the time between November and budget hearings in May to have those numbers in the budget for that fiscal year, okay? Which would then be starting to be spent in December, January of that fiscal cycle. So from a budgeting standpoint, I could put that together with the November dates.
All right. So that will work with our, this language then could work if this were to happen. Again, we're talking worst-case scenario.
Yes, from a, from a budgeting standpoint, putting together the budget, getting it into the budget process, yes.
Okay. Mr. Johnson's thinking while he does that. I'm going to move down the line with some questions, and then let this percolate a little bit, and then we'll circle back to it. Yes, if we need to. Counselor President Smith.
I'm just listening at the moment. I'm sure I'll have questions, but I'm not there yet.
Okay.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Counselor Herrera.
Thank you for the clarification. Thank you for the whole word. I, thank you for the clarification. I came into the process a little late when this first was formed, and I have, I think I have a different take than most people, but I do appreciate the comments by all, everybody, you know, as far as where we're at right now. And I was, my initial concern was the name deal, and I've seen that they worked through this, but for some reason, I want to pause in this whole thing. Something tells me there's, like Brad said, in terms of Little League, I, and I agree, you know, and I don't have an agenda. I guess my agenda would be the kids, you know, like, we've been talking here, and I, I, there's something I want to, I think, I don't know why, I just have a feeling that we've got to pause and do this right. Nothing, I mean, I know the Walkers will do well, and I, it's nothing personal, I just want to make sure that we do the right thing. I don't know that I'm ready to get, I'm not there yet in terms of the, I don't know if the answer is opening it up again, or, I've always, from day one, 25 years ago, I've always thought that would be a city, something we should do, but of course, that's complicated, but for some reason, it doesn't feel right at this time. I want to make, I want, I would rather pause. That's where I'm at, so. But like I say, it's nothing personal against anybody. I just want to, I just have a feeling that there's something out there that we can, that's not, I'm just not there yet with putting this, going forward with the, and I appreciate all the comments. I, you know, and I know all about the volunteer thing. I spent a lot of years there, and I, and I appreciate all of the folks and the people that put all the time and effort into that. But that's probably why it's so big to me in my mind. I've been thinking about it quite a bit in the last few weeks, and I'm guilty of not following this as closely as I should have. I had some medical issues for like a year and a half, actually, I still do, but I didn't follow it until the last couple weeks. I've been thinking more about it. So I'm not, like I say, I'm not there yet on going through. So I'm looking for some kind of a pause and determine, think about it a little more myself. That's my, that's my position. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Questions, Counselor Reed?
No questions at this time.
Thank you. Counselor Kohler, questions?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I have a lot of questions.
Questions for, on the staff report, or specifics in the...
Yes, I do have a question on the staff report. How long would it really take us to determine how much it would cost to, for the city to run the field, to maintain the field? If we did a, a facility and maintenance program, what would it cost us to take care of the field?
For just the field maintenance and take care of the, well, it's the complex, because it's more than just the field, okay?
Correct.
I'll clarify that.
When I say field, I mean?
The complex.
The complex.
The entire complex.
Yes, thank you.
I will say it's going to cost the city staffing and materials in the neighborhood of $150,000 to $200,000 a year.
I think you're light on that.
I may be.
The numbers that I looked at from visiting with Mr. Epley, and these are very conservative numbers. When I say conservative, I think that it probably costs us, if we did two FTEs and a part-time FT, a part-time employee, we're looking at probably between $200,000 and $300,000 employee-wise, and then probably at the max, $500,000 for everything else, gas, fertilizer, lights, fencing repair, all the rest of the stuff they would have to do.
I'm talking about basic maintenance. I'm not talking about top-notch sports facility maintenance, because I have no experience on what that truly costs. So you may be closer in your labor rates, the half a million for other costs seems a little high for maintenance. If you add some improvements in there, it's not high at all. Improvements being major facility repairs, drainage system repairs, major irrigation system repairs, major building repairs, things like that.
Handicap walks and...
Won't even touch it. No, half a million, you could spend a half a million alone on handicap access for that facility.
Okay.
That's a difficult facility to provide appropriate, legal, usable handicap access.
But it's something that needs to be addressed.
Needs to be addressed, absolutely. It does, yes. And what I, the statement there I made about the access, that is, I'll say, full access in the park to comply, my understanding of the ADA regulations, to comply with them does not mean you have to provide full access to the park. I don't believe you have to have access to every single field and every amenity within the park. I could be wrong about that.
Quite sure that you're wrong.
Okay.
As the father of somebody in a wheelchair, I'm quite sure that you're wrong.
Okay.
And then how much of a departure is this contract from the original RFP?
Do you mean, it's not a departure from the RFP, because there was no contract with the RFP. If you're saying in comparison to the current contract with Little League, mainly the naming, I mean, there's actually quite a few sections over the last several months that have been changed, but not significantly. If you wanted those changes, I could get those all for you, but I don't have them handy.
Let me ask it this way. Compared to the scope of the original RFP, how close is a contract to that?
Well, again, there was no contract connected, and sometimes there is, by the way, attached. So there was no contract attached to the RFP. If you're meaning, is the contract vary from the RFP, I wouldn't think it very, very much. Well, the main thing was a direction from council a few months ago, and that was with the timing of a possible early termination. That was not in the RFP. That'd probably be one of the main changes. Other than that, I'm not aware of any.
I've gotten dozens and dozens of phone calls from people with lots of concerns about what we're really trying to do. And from all those phone calls, I think the major thing that I'm looking at and saying is that, one, we've got to honor the time efforts of the hundreds and thousands of people who spent their time and efforts volunteering to maintain and build those fields. We've got to honor that. That's the first thing. And the second is, we've got to allow for a facility to provide in perpetuity a field for kids at Kaiser to play.
So at this point, if we're going to start deliberation, then we need to put a motion on the table. So right now, we're asking for questions on the staff report and the contract, and then we'll circle back on deliberation. Additional questions? Okay. I'm going to go to Counselor President Smith, unless you have another question, Counselor Kohler.
Come back, thanks.
All right, thank you. Counselor President Smith.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mr. Lawyer, you just listed off quite a few items that we could possibly be facing on cost. Does that mean that if this goes through, and maybe Mr. Johnson needs to answer this question, I'm not sure, but all the things you just listed off, does that mean then For the Love of the Game is responsible for those? Because it sounded like some stuff that we would automatically be responsible for, so I just needed clarification on that, please.
So clarification on which requirements? The ones that Bill was talking about?
Yeah, so are those standard things we're going to be facing anyhow, or would that be on them? And are, do they know that? Because it sounded expensive.
Well, there's certain lists at the beginning of the contract of the things they're going to do in the first two years, so that part is clear. And I don't want to get into discussion about any particular legal requirements that may or may not apply, but the contract requires them to do whatever is legally required with regard to the fields, which is, you know, I mean, I wouldn't get into defining what would be legally required yet. So, you know, that, yeah, there's not, there's no requirement on the city. That's, they have the right to come to the city, just like Little League did, and ask, you know, budget time is usually appropriate, say, you know, can you help us out with this project? That's how the bathrooms got built, the parking lot got paved, the paved parking lot over there, and that sort of thing. But the requirements are on the manager to do anything that's legally required to be done. The only requirement with the city is regard to hazard or fires, ice storms with regards to insurance matters. We had fences damaged there during the ice storm. The city's insurance covered that, but normal wear and tear and any other legal requirements would be on the manager.
And correct me if I'm wrong, Shannon, I believe there's a provision in the contract that states something along the lines of...
that states something along the lines, if there is something that's required because it is a city park that wouldn't be required at Volcano Stadium, for instance, that the city would be...
Yeah, there is that clause.
Would be responsible for that piece because it's only because it's a city park.
Right, got it, thank you.
Well, no.
Okay, so I'm going to ask a couple of questions, one is on page, let me go back to my notes here, on page eight, it lists Bill Lawyer and Tracy Davis as contact people, with the hopes that this contract does go long-term, it would be appropriate to say, or designate?
Yes, that'd be fine.
Okay. And then, on page nine, it's pretty detailed about concessions and so forth, isn't that pretty much licensed by Marion County Health Department, wouldn't that pretty much cover all of that? I remember when we did our food truck ordinance, we got very, very detailed, and then when we revised it, we said licensed, and then called it there.
And, I'm sorry, Madam Mayor, what section are you referring to?
Page nine, six D, isn't that pretty much the same thing as saying licensed by Marion County Health Department for concessions?
Yes, but that has more detail, it does say later that they have to have all utility, I mean, excuse me, all permits and licenses, so I think that that is covered there, did you want, did you want to change D?
I was just saying that it's, while it's very detailed, that just saying that they're going to have their Marion County Health Department license would seem to cover it, but maybe that's not as inclusive as what we're being here.
This is a little stricter than that, in case there's something the county wouldn't cover, I guess is what I'm getting at, that's the reason for it.
I just wasn't sure what that might be, anyway, that's why I brought up the question.
Okay.
Okay, so those are the only two additional questions I had. Counselor Day, you've got a question or comment, and that was, if we go to?
I've got a question, actually, because Mr. Lawyer just said something that I'm not sure I agree with, he said that, and I don't mean to put words in your mouth, but I thought I heard him say that if there's something, facilities-wise, it doesn't comply with the law, the city's on the hook for the cost, not the, not the manager. I did say that with the call-out, rather, that if it's only required because it's a city park.
Well, not because it's public property, in other words, some specific park requirement.
Because...
And that has always been in agreement from previously.
So it says, section 16 of the contract, which is new language, says, goes through, the manager shall at all times conduct its operations, ensure that the operations of all subcontractors and employees are conducted in full compliance with all laws, then the last sentence says, this shall include, but is not limited to, compliance with state and federal disability.
Yeah, that's the clause that I added, that's correct.
Yeah, so that's a different clause than what we, apparently, so, I mean...
I'm trying to find the other clause that Mr. Lawyer was referring to, and I can't, I can't find it yet, it may have been taken out due to that other clause, I'm not sure.
I didn't see it, so, so if, in fact, the, the parks, or the Little League fields, if for some reason, well, an issue was raised, and you got to put sidewalks in, who's, who covers the cost of that? For the love of the game, the manager, or the City of Kaiser, under this contract?
Well, I'll give you the legal answer and then the practical answer if I may, Counselor Day. Depending on the expense involved, my guess is that the manager, who's quite a backup, the legal answer is the manager would have to do it, as I read the contract, I assume that's how you read it, too.
That's how I read.
As a practical matter, my concern would be, and I wouldn't blame the managers, they would come to the city and say, I can't, this, this breaks the bank, could we talk about, is there any contribution? And if there wasn't, then the manager might be forced to terminate the contract, so, with notice, of course, so...
But under this, they wouldn't be able to terminate the contract for four years?
Correct. And, and if I may, Madam Mayor?
I just want to add something here, though, but this is, you're talking about adding a new structure, because under the, but the sidewalks don't exist.
I know.
So if, if something changed where that project was going to be done on city right-of-way, that may or may not be a park-related, that may be more related to our streets and sidewalks, but I'm also thinking about the projects that are not yet in the master plan, but very likely will be in the master plan for that park, and that is not something that I believe we are obligating Love of the Game to fulfill, but isn't that our obligation?
Where?
When we, when we add projects to the new parks' master plans, such as...
This isn't, putting in accessible sidewalks or pathways is, that's not part of the master plans, that's federal law.
Well, agreed, and that's something that the city has worked on, our ADA inventory, and the projects that need to be done, agreed.
But there's nothing in the contract...
Right.
This is, that says, it's the city's responsibility, in fact, as I read it, it's, it's the manager's responsibility, and what Mr. Johnson just told us...
Yeah.
I can, I can see a circumstance where somebody who's got a sibling who's in a, who uses an assistive device of some sort, they can't get down to the field...
Mm-hmm.
And they sue somebody, now this says, the contract says, the manager has to indemnify the city, right?
Right.
It also seems to say, at least as I read it, that for the love of the game, the manager is responsible for putting in those sidewalks. I can tell you with reasonable certainty that the facility as it currently exists is not ADA compliant.
Oh, there's nobody in this room's going to argue with that one?
Right.
Yeah.
So, somebody's going to be on the hook for that, well, they can't terminate the contract for four years, we can't terminate the contract for four years.
And I think more to your point, though, is that, is that the appropriate place for that responsibility, should it be on, on a manager of the facility to provide new construction?
Right.
For complying with ADA updates, because up until now, we've never required the Little League organization to do that.
Well aware of that.
So, yeah, painfully aware, so with that, you know, going to a new manager saying, you know, the old Little League organizations were not required to provide that, but the new one, I think that's a very, a point extremely well taken, and I see two heads working on this over there, because I think, I think that's a very point, very well taken.
I mean, I, I, to be clear, I'm, I, as it, as it was represented to me, I'm good with the contract, I think there are some changes that we made to it.
Well, and that's a point of clarification on who would be responsible for adding the compliance and the facilities for that, Mr. Johnson?
Bill and I found the section that he was thinking of, it's section four.
Okay.
And it says, it talks about maintenance, and then it says, gent, with some detail in second paragraph, it says, notwithstanding the above, in event a repair, maintenance, or improvement is required by law, only because the subject property is a city park, and said repair, maintenance, improvement would not have to be required if this property were owned by manager, then the cost of such repair shall be the sole responsibility of the city. That's been in there for a long time, that was in the old agreement, too, and the concept was, is if there was some specific park requirement, then, then that would be on the city. With regard to the two years, I did find the staff report from September when the council dealt with this, and the staff report, the contract didn't change from then, and it says in the staff report, a two-year notice for withdrawal, and I think I misspoke to a couple of counselors, but it's been like that since September. So when, when someone asked me about the out clause, I remembered the one year, so I apologize for my memory being off, but it was the same contract back in September.
Okay. So what I am seeing, though, in the section under maintenance standard, adding ADA accessibility is not in there, because that is a, that is not something we've ever required at a Little League organization, it is something that we've recognized needs to happen in that facility, because it is a public facility, so it is, it's something that, we have a list of projects that need to be done in all of our public facilities, we contracted with the Council of Governments to produce that list, and I know we're working through it as we can...
Right.
And as projects are done, is, two questions, one, is this identified in that list that we got from the Council of Governments, and two, do we want to be clear that improvements such as this are the responsibility of the city, since it's a city-owned asset?
Well, I can answer that, in the ADA transition plan that the Council of Governments prepared for the city, it does mention ADA compliance issues in all of the parks, and what are needed, including the Little League facility, okay? In my experience in addressing those needs in other parks within the park system, Flagger Creek Park is a good example, okay? We rebuilt the sports court, the basketball court, okay, we had to make ADA access to the basketball court compliant, we did, we replaced the play structure, we had to make that compliant, we did, we did not have to make access to the soccer field compliant, because there were no changes to the soccer field. So, one of my statement earlier about, we don't have to make the whole park compliant, what I meant by that really was, not necessarily at the same time or all at one time, the regulations kick in, we have to do it whenever we make a change or do an improvement, okay? From a best service to the community standpoint, and the desire to update the facility or any park, it would obviously be best to do the entire facility at one time. In most cases, it's cost prohibitive, in the Little League facility, it's extremely cost prohibitive, so it might be a better approach for ADA compliance acts, if you will, to identify the primary, most important areas, or the first improvement to a field, or something that's going to require that to happen, okay? And then also put together a, and this is something that needs to be done within the adoption of the citywide ADA compliance plan, assign a schedule to meet those compliance needs without, throughout the city, not just in the parks, but everywhere, sidewalks, everything.
So is this going to be included in the Parks Master Plan that we're going to be looking at at the end of this month?
Because the transition plan has not been adopted, it's referenced in the Parks Master Plan.
Okay.
Okay, specifics are not included, again, because that plan has not been adopted to this point. I have, we have all the information, and in fact, we've checked off a number of things that we've gone through since we had the information, I think in 2018 was the first time I saw it, so, but that's when the inspections were done, so.
So, in reference to this contract, though, we are not holding the management organization responsible for doing significant improvements, because it is a city facility, and that is something that the city would then undertake as part of our Parks Master Plan projects and capital improvements, am I correct on that?
I don't think that's 100% correct, because the contract does have stipulations in improvements being done by the manager of the facility, and listing what those improvements are going to be.
Right.
So by listing them, in my opinion, in my understanding, that puts the responsibility on the management group with potential city participation, if there are reasons, because it's a city park, there are things that are required that wouldn't be required otherwise.
So under the prior contract with the Little League organization, when they made improvements, ADA improvements that should go with it, did they happen, or did they not?
To my knowledge, they did not do any improvements that would have required ADA access, the concession stands were built, the bathrooms were built, I don't think replacing the dugout on a ball field brings that provision into play.
Okay.
They didn't add any fields, so I'm not aware of an improvement that was done in the complex over the last 10 years, that would have required significant ADA compliance upgrades.
Okay. So I think this is something we've got to be clear on who's responsible, responsible for what, because this would be a departure from our previous management arrangements where projects were done, we want to make sure that we add in the portions for upgrades that improve our ADA compliance, but understand that there's a, there's a city component there, in my opinion, and to put it all on a management company may or may not be the wisest choice, especially when we're adding facility upgrades to the Parks Master Plan for the Little League Park Complex, but that's just one opinion. Is there anything that we would need to clarify in the contract as to the responsibilities of both parties in this area? Shan is madly writing.
Oh, sorry, yeah, I think that we could fine-tune that, you know, I guess the question would be, is how exact or intentionally vague and subjective do you want to be, because, and lawyers do do that occasionally.
The least of the wood.
Yeah. Well, and the clause that Counselor Day pointed out, depending on how you want to read it, and I know this is just fascinating stuff for our audience, probably getting into the weeds here, but it...
Nobody's leaving right now, so I think we're good.
Manager shall at all times conduct its operations and ensure that the operations of subcontractors and employers are conducted, et cetera, doesn't really talk about improvements in this section, and talks, it says, any license or certificate from Marion County Health, et cetera, and then it says, this shall include, but is not limited to, compliance with state and federal disability laws. In terms of improvements that are required by the ADA versus other improvements, I think that that's an open question, as to who would, who would be responsible for that, as a practical matter, I think going forward, if you go forward with this group, it's the same as the other groups, and they, it basically is work it out as it comes, if you want more certainty than that, then we certainly can rewrite that, but then the question becomes, what, what would that be? Because although everyone likes certainty, the price tag would, might be such that the manager just could not absorb it, and then we'd be, we'd be stuck, so, and again, it kind of depends on what it is, you're kind of shooting in the dark when you don't know what project it is that you're going to be talking about later, so.
All right, thank you, I know I've been completely absorbed in this conversation, and I want to check in with everybody else on, is everybody good on, at least kind of where we're at with this, this particular issue? Or has another one to bring up? I'll start with Counselor Kohler.
I'm okay with our ADA issue at this point, I do have, I do want to talk about a tractor at some point.
About a tractor?
I do.
Okay, ask the question.
Okay, thank you, contract says we're going to give a tractor to, to the manager.
A mower?
Mower.
Well, it's connected to a pretty good, pretty substantial piece of machinery.
I don't consider it substantial, it's a zero-turn riding mower.
The question...
From the park standpoint, and I don't mean to minimize this, don't take me wrong, please, I don't, that didn't come out as the way I really wanted it to, the city purchased a mower for the Little League Complex a number of years ago, outright purchased it, provided to the complex. In 2019, the Little League Association had a mower go bad, fail, was not repairable, they had, they approached us to see if we could cost-share the mower with them, we did, and I confirmed this morning, we paid for the whole mower, they reimbursed us half the cost, so the city has purchased one and a half mowers for the facility, I expect those to stay with the facility.
Exactly.
It's simple as that, the ownership, we can debate, we can talk about, personally, professionally, I don't really care who owns them, as long as they're at the facility, they're maintained, to serve the facility.
Counselor Johnson?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, so this matter, the mower was discussed with Mr. Lawyer, Mr. Epley, and myself, and with the background that Mr. Lawyer just laid out, and the point that I brought out is, I said, well, whoever owns it's going to have to maintain it, do you want to maintain it, or you want to give it to them, have them maintain it? And the discussion was, you know, let's give it to them, and they maintain it, particularly because they're, neither one of them are very new anymore, so... because they're, neither one of them are very new anymore, so we would rather not have the responsibility for the maintenance. You can't really, kind of, it goes hand in hand, in my opinion. You either own it and have to maintain it, or they own it and they have to maintain it, and that was the choice. And that's why it was like that in the same contract that was sent in September, too.
Counselor Kohler?
So, does the, do the mowers stay with the facility, then? Is that in there at all?
There's no guarantee that the mower would stay with the facility. And we discussed that, too, and felt that, you know, the value wasn't there to worry about requiring it to stay, then, then the question is, well, who owns it, then? If the council wants to change that, we could certainly look at some compromise on, on the requirement that it stay. They're responsible for maintaining and keeping a mower, so.
Well, you're not going to be able to maintain that, those fields without some decent mowers.
Right. And they're responsible for keeping it maintained, so they would be responsible for either replacing or repairing the mower.
Is there any, is there any, maybe this is a Mr. Wood question, is there any ARPA funds that we could use to help facilitate or, or maintain the facility?
Well, we could always use the revenue replacement funds. We have pretty broad latitude in whatever we want to do with those. It would just offset the use for other things.
Any further questions?
Just a clarification. So, tonight, we need to either adopt the contract, reject the contract, and, and either come up with a new RFP, or we can pause the contract and find out more information that the council wants to know, or is it, are we at all or nothing here, or where are we?
Well, we put a motion on the table regarding the contract, then we can deliberate on whether or not we want to go forward with the contract. And if that motion fails, then we'll have to give the staff an alternative for maintaining that facility, whether it's as a park or as a baseball facility. And those are different. So, that's how, that's kind of the order operation here. Okay? I'm going to go to Counselor Reed. Any questions? Counselor Herrera, any questions? Counsel President Smith, questions? Counselor Day, questions?
So, I do, just the one on Section 13 related to the termination. Are we going to, I'm not sure who to ask this question of, so I'll start with Mr. Johnson and go from there. So, are we going to change that to 20, I'm not comfortable with three years, or four years. I was under the, I actually thought it was 18 months as well.
That was the original discussion, I agree.
Yeah.
And, and then since that meeting with council, this came, and it was in the September 20 draft that way, and it was in my staff report that way.
Okay.
But no one picked up it at that time, and then I misspoke after that about the one year because that had been discussed and it stuck in my mind, so.
Yeah, because I had a conversation with--
Yeah.
So--
So, to answer your question, the council, well, you have a lot of different options with this.
Right.
I think the obvious ones are a notice after only one year for two years, or an 18-month notice after two years, or an 18-month notice after one year. The downside to the one year, of course, is is that enough time to determine? But of course, what that means is you can have it after that one year, you obviously can't have it before. So, but the way it is written, it's two years plus a two-year notice. So, any combination that you would, you would like to propose, you know, I can discuss that with the Walkers and, and, and see if that, that change is amenable.
Counselor Duran, questions?
Not at this time.
All right. Thank you. Counsel President Smith, are you ready to put a motion on the table for us to deliberate?
In order to get to deliberation, yes. I move Kaiser City Council, approve Resolution R 2021, authorizing city manager to sign Park Management Agreement with the Love of the Game, For Love of the Game, Inc. Second?
It's been moved on seconded at the Kaiser City Council, adopt Resolution R 2021, authorizing the city manager to sign Park Management Agreement with For Love of the Game, Inc. Okay. Deliberation. Questions or comments, Counselor Duran?
No.
Questions or comments, Counselor Day?
If we're talking about approving the, the contract as it's being presented to us right now, I can't support it.
And is there an amendment or a direction?
I would, I would like to amend Section 13 to give us two years, so that it would read, "The agreement may be terminated upon an 18-month written notice given by one party to the other party. Notice cannot be given prior to November 1, 2022, and notice must be given between November 1 and November 30 in any calendar year beginning in 2022."
Is that a friendly amendment?
Yes.
Does the second accept that?
Before I do, I would like to check with Mr. Lawyer to, to figure out if that is feasible or realistic.
18 months is fairly realistic from spinning up a city operation. Mr. Witham just mentioned something that I hadn't thought about. That ends that agreement like in June? That's kind of a problem with baseball and softball season.
It seems to me that, that extra six months gives us a little bit more latitude and a little bit more--
I, I would say that based on the past few years' historical use of the facility, they're using the facility through October, good weather.
You know, I may have misspoke. I think I said 18 months and I meant two years. So, "The agreement may not be terminated upon two-year written notice given by one party to the other party. Notice cannot be given prior to November 1, 2022, and notice must be given between November 1 and November 30 in any calendar year beginning in 2022."
So, is that--
That's my motion.
Restated friendly amendment?
Yes. I apologize for misstating.
So, if I might clarify that. So, that basically only gives us a year to, to try out this contract before either party can say yea or nay on this?
Yep.
Considering that, you know, the task force took two years to even come to this point, it seems to me that a year is not long enough to, to figure out how to make this work.
So, you're going to, so you're saying no to the friendly amendment?
Yes.
Okay. So, the friendly amendment has not been accepted. Counselor Day, do you want to make that as a motion?
No.
Anything else?
Well, then there's also the issue of the ADA compliance and who, who's going to deal with those improvements. I just, I don't feel, I don't think that moving forward with this at this time, I kind of feel like we're trying to slap it together. I understand that we don't have somebody maintain, under contract to maintain the park. This time, we're meeting again in two weeks, I kind of feel like we're also doing this kind of blind because we haven't spoken with For Love of the Game. I just think we need to get these two issues resolved. I think that's the wise thing to do, myself.
Okay. So, the, the two areas to clarify are Section 13 and to put in, to clarify the requirements and responsibilities regarding improvements and their--
Yeah.
And the ADA portions that go with those improvements.
Yeah. And I apologize. I, I read this thing three or four times, this contract, three or four times, and I missed both of those, and I apologize. I just, I, I, for some reason, I was reading November 2023 as November 22, 22, I don't know why.
Well, we've got--
Apologize.
Nine, nine sets of eyes on it, so, or at least a dozen. So, those two things noted. All right. Counsel President Smith?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I, I do have similar concerns. I don't want to be placing the Walkers into a position that they were not signing up for. And a couple of things that bother me, and look, I don't have a dog in the fight, my kids played softball like twice out there, so I, I'm not super familiar with it. I have not been part of the Kaiser Little League Task Force, so a lot of this is new, and that's why I have a lot of questions. I do feel like we also are kind of dangling a carrot out in front of them, saying, yeah, here, once we figure out how we're going to do something else, we're going to cancel this on you. That's how it feels to me, and so I don't feel it's really fair to them to say, hey, go ahead, take care of it right now, when we've had conversations about the city taking it over. There's just an ethical thing here that I just feel like if that's the direction we're going in three to five years, then I think that we should be pretty upfront about that and not like set them up to, oh, hey, here's a 10-year contract, but we're going to be out in a couple of years. That's just how I'm feeling. I don't know if that's the message that anyone else is getting, but I just think that, that, you know, we, historically, Kaiser, bless you, I appreciate all of the volunteers, and so much has been done by the volunteers, but I've also heard the community say out loud at what point, how big until the city actually steps up and, and does a part of this and has their own internal, internal system. And, you know, there's, I've heard different ideas, I've, you know, and I just don't know, I don't know how to go about this the right, the right way and the ethical way, as fair as possible. Obviously, the number one thing is to make sure that the kids are taken care of and that we are providing for the kids and that those baseball fields, because I know how important it is in the city of Kaiser, that we're doing our job. I hear things like with the lawnmower, well, yeah, we're just going to give it to them because we don't want to maintain it. I just, I, I don't like that approach. I don't like the city going, yeah, thanks for all your volunteer work, here, you take it, so we don't have to do it. There comes a point, and when we get a sudden influx of $8 million, I think it's our responsibility to look at the whole picture that wasn't here when we started this whole thing. So, I think that that's where my concern is, is that it, it just doesn't feel fair in how we're approaching this. And maybe I'm totally wrong, I, I did miss the last meeting, and I'm open to any clarification, but that's, that's what I'm feeling right now. So, that's just my thought. And it definitely needs to go back to be reviewed, as Counselor Day said, because I would not want them, I wouldn't want them to sign a contract that could leave them wide open for something like a lawsuit that somebody decides to sue us for it, and then they're somehow liable for that. That's, that's not fair. So, that's my opinion.
So, having been one of the people who started the task force, because we need to take care of this facility for baseball and softball specifically, and to be able to honor the work that's been done by, at large by volunteers over the years, to make sure it's sustainable, and bringing in people who professionally know how to do that kind of work was the intention of the request for proposal. Proposals were received, and Love of the Game has the professional expertise to deliver exactly that. If a future council wishes to look at this again and bring it in-house because it's cost-effective for the people of Kaiser, that could be a conversation, but right now, I'm not seeing the staff capabilities, especially having to pay, you know, city wages and benefits on top of everything that also goes with running something in-house, plus the scheduling, let's not forget, that's also part of this, and that is a specialty. That is not something that we can throw on another employee and say, oh, by the way, schedule these fields, too. That's not how this works, as I understand it. And again, I, none of my kids play baseball or softball. They're all athletes, and none of them did these sports, ever. So, I think it's really important to understand what we're asking. We've, we've had contracts with organizations over the years. This is the next iteration of that, working with a professional organization that knows what baseball and softball fields should look like, can look like, and have the expertise to deliver that. So, that's why I've been very much in favor of contracting with an organization like Love of the Game to be able to bring in that level of service that the city cannot currently provide, and certainly not with our current staffing levels. Yes, we have ARPA funds, those are one and dones. Yes, $8 million, ooh, sounds like a lot of money. How many ways did we find to spend that the other night?
[inaudible] $8 million?
Yeah. We, we could spend that 10 times over. Yeah. Mr. Wood's shaking his head, going, uh huh. So, just to make sure we understand that if that is a project, a program we're going to bring in-house at some point, that's a separate conversation, doing pricing, doing management, you know, figuring out what that looks like in terms of staffing, and then going out to see if we can add that to general fund, which is already constrained. In my opinion, this is something that is a, is a plus for the community, it's a plus for the kids, it's a plus that we have professionals right here in our community that know how and that are willing to enter a contractual agreement with the city to provide those services on a sustainable basis. The other thing we heard from the baseball organizations was the lack of continuity from one year to the next, when they changed boards. The Love of the Game's not going anywhere. And I think it's important to recognize that continuity as well. From one year to the next, when kids moved up and they changed leagues, or they graduated and they went to college, you had a lot of change, turnover in the organizations. And I think we need to, we owe it to the people of the city of Kaiser to make sure that if we're going to run this as a baseball, softball facility, that it's sustainable. So, that is my mindset here. The only reason that we have to make sure we get it right in terms of the termination clauses is that we have to, you have to plan for the worst and, and also plan for the best. And we want to make sure that we get the language right, but hope we never use it. And I don't anticipate that we will. I really don't. So, I absolutely support making sure we have the clarification on the ADA, because again, I don't, I agree with you, Counsel President Smith, we don't want to obligate an organization to do something that we've never obligated the prior organizations to do. And we want to be clear about who has to do what as we invest more into the future of that facility for baseball and softball and for scheduling it. So, that's my two and a half cents worth, and that's why I will, I agree that this needs to have that clarified, but that's why it's important, in my opinion, to contract with a professional organization that can deliver for the kids of Kaiser. Counselor Herrera?
Uh, okay. I know where you're at. I know where you stand.
Yes. That's the idea, is deliberation.
I, I still, we do have a motion on the floor, correct?
Yes, we do.
I still feel the same way. I think there's too many kinks that I'd like to see worked out, in my opinion. And I believe it's really important, it's that big of a deal to me, Kaiser Little League, which, you know, to, I really believe that we need, I still believe, and we need to pause and work out all the kinks, whether it's, you know, what Counselor Day was talking about. I just, I, my gut tells me not, not yet. I'm not ready for this, but I just, that's where I'm at. Nothing against anybody, I just feel like Kaiser Little League's got a, and, and it has nothing to do with in-house. That, that's something I've always thought of for years, but I just, reading the contract, listening to everything, it seemed like there's a lot of kinks, and we're, it sounds like we're just trying to correct it as we go. And I want to make sure that we do this right. It's a big deal to me as far as Kaiser Little League. And yes, like I said, my agenda is what's best for the kids, the city. That's, that's where I stand. So, so, thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. Counselor Reed?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So, where I am on this is, first of all, just deep appreciation for the 40, the volunteers over the 40-some-odd years that have been involved with this park. They have built a great thing, which has now gotten to the point where it needs to evolve. And, you know, that is, that says a lot for, for the, the people who, who built this, you know, that they built it to such, to such an impressive state that now it's time to evolve with this. And evolving is scary. Evolving means change. Evolving means doing things differently, perhaps, than we've done the before. And honestly, I, I really appreciate this process. You know, Mr. Johnson has done a fantastic job in being responsive to both the council's input and working-- the council's input and working with, for the Love of the Game. And I, I think that we won't ever have anything that's perfect. I think that we have some, some things that, that can be addressed before we approve this, but I, I think it's really important that we move forward. And yes, moving forward can be scary and moving forward, but as a community, as, as we support each other and as we work through these, these particular issues, and again, have the kids foremost in mind, what's best for the kids is the continuity of this. If we delay this too much longer, then we get into a position where there's going to be a gap, and there won't be that continuity. And so I, I feel like we really need to move forward this, with this. I feel like the, the contract, as it is written, is, is good in terms of covering all of the, the concerns of all the parties. Does the language need to be tweaked a bit? I will leave that up to, you know, our, our, our city council, I mean, no, city councilor, to, to be, because, you know, he's put some, a lot of thought into these things. And, you know, he has run this by us at every step of the way. We've had input every step of the way. And that's a very difficult thing to write a contract with seven people, well, twelve people, having some kind of skin in the game. So I appreciate the process. I feel like we've come to a good place with this. I'm ready to pass it.
Thank you very much. Counselor Kohler.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I have sat on the Little League Task Force for two years and, and actually reviewed the RFPs and, and voted on them. I was really disappointed with the way the RFPs came in. I felt that, that they were non-responsive at that point and needed to be rejected. And here we are, looking at it. And I have a lot of concerns. I just have a lot of concerns. I don't know that I can support it. One of the questions I still have is, if push came to shove, and we had to do something, how long would it take us to actually put, hire some people and do it? I mean, if, if we had to do it, I mean, could we do it in five months?
This deliberation.
Yeah. So I just don't feel good about it.
Okay. Thank you very much. So we have a motion, a second on the table, but we do have an issue that still needs to be addressed with the ADA language to clarify who is responsible for what. Mr. Johnson.
So I believe there was a lot of discussion about the ADA issue.
Correct.
Other than Counselor Day, there was not a lot of discussion on the termination date. So your options are either go with the motion as is, with no changes. Make either a friendly amendment or move to amend as you see fit, or the mover in second withdraw the motion and make another motion. Either, those are both basically equal, however you want to address it. It does sound to me like, if I'm counting correctly, a possible majority want to move forward with something on this contract. You need to decide how you want to do that, and, and whether or not you want to just, you know, refer it back to me with regard to the ADA issue. I would appreciate direction on the Counselor Day's issue with determination, because I didn't hear a lot of discussion about that, other than the friendly amendment wasn't made, so.
Right. I don't think there was, I, I think that was on the, the termination, that it was a two-year with the twenty-twenty, changing from the twenty-three to the twenty-two. And that was, there was not a lot of discussion about that.
So I, I didn't hear any, any additional support for that, so that, that'd be the only question on whether or not you want to make any kind of different motion.
Was that supposed to be a, that was supposed to be a friendly amendment?
But it was not accepted. And, and Counselor Day chose not to make
Oh, chose not to make a motion.
So maybe, maybe that issue is done for now.
That became moot.
Okay.
So, but I think the other one is regarding clarification on responsibilities. So we don't, unduly burden Love of the Game with paying for capital improvements that are maybe more necessarily the city's.
Right.
I think we have to have some clarification there, because we haven't had this come up with the Little League Park. Yes, we, you know, Mr. Lawyer did a good job answering the question regarding, prior projects had not triggered the ADA changes, perhaps. But anyway, we are where we are. We want to do it right, and we want to make sure that we are adding as much accessibility as possible. So with that, we've got to be clear that
If, since you do have a motion on the table.
Right.
You need to determine if you want to amend that to give me general direction to make that change. The motion on the table is to adopt it just as is. I don't
As is.
think you want to do that.
No.
It doesn't sound like it. So
Friendly amendment, well, I don't know if we want to amend, or do we want to withdraw and then direct staff to come back?
That would be fine, too, Madam Mayor.
I'd like to withdraw the motion. Second.
Okay. So the motion, the motion has been withdrawn. So we need to move to direct staff to work out the language regarding the responsibilities for ADA and other capital improvements, and come back with that amended language for, at the next council meeting. I'm going to go, Mr. Johnson and Counselor Day.
The impression I was left with, and I would like you to put this in the motion, is, is to be precise, is that ADA required capital improvements would be the responsibility of the city?
Correct.
It appeared that way. I will note that we will still retain the clause that requires the manager with regard to operations.
Correct.
Will be, any, any regulations, including Disability Act, that have to do with operations, not capital improvements, would be the responsibility of the manager. So that makes sense to me. Does that seem, any questions on that?
All right. So so I, I went ahead, Counselor, Counselor President, I put the motion on the table.
Okay, perfect.
Regarding directing staff to work out the language regarding capital improvements and the ADA requirements that go with them, being the responsibility of the city, but maybe in partnership with Love of the Game. I'll need a second.
Second.
Okay. So it's moved to second, that's the Kaiser City Council direct staff to what I just said. Tracy can reread it when we get done. So I will, I will speak to my motion very briefly, and that is a lot of our, thanks to Counselor Day catching that. I want to make sure that we're clear. Because we're doing the Parks Master Plan, because we're going to be adding specific projects that have not been in the Parks Master Plan up until now, projects that we have recognized need to be done at the park and will be required to be in the master plan for us to apply for grants and other funding that we have not been eligible for up until now. Once the master plan is approved, we will be able to, as a city, apply for grant funding that we have not been able to do before. This is some of the major projects that we identified at the task force and that have been discussed at the Parks Board, drainage and parking lot being two of the big ones. ADA compliance construction will also be a very big part of that. And with those large capital improvements, getting that into the master plan, we'll be able to move forward on those projects specifically. They don't exist now, is not in the master plan now, and to tell an organization that we're contracting with that you're going to be responsible for something that doesn't yet exist, I don't think is fair. So that's, that's my pitch, and I'm sticking to it. Questions? Counselor Duran? Okay. Counselor Day?
Well, I want to start off by saying, all the reasons that the mayor and Counselor Reed gave for supporting the contract, I agree with wholeheartedly. I think those are excellent points, and I do agree with them. However, with that being said, I still have a problem with the termination provisions. I, I just, I'm, I'm concerned, I, I'm going to, between now and when we vote on this, I'm going to have to get my head around it, because I'm concerned about the four years. That's not what I, I thought. It's my fault. I, 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 you know, I can read contracts. I write them all the time. But I have a problem, I, I'm, I'm having a real problem with that provision. That's not what I thought was in there, and, and, and I'm frustrated with myself for not catching it earlier. But I also know, my concern is, if after a year or two, we figure out, because there's a schedule in this agreement about the, about the improvements that have to happen, well, if the improvements that are supposed to happen on, by April first, 2023, if those aren't done, then our options, we can't terminate it, terminate the contract, so, because we have to give them two years, and we can't give them two years' notice until November of 2023.
I'm going to press pause.
I know, I know. I'm, I'm going.
Mr. Johnson, one, two.
If there was a specific default, the notice period's shorter.
I, I understand.
Okay.
Then we have, that's what I was just about to say.
All right.
And then if we, if there's a default, then then our, our opportunity is to terminate this agreement after a thirty-day notice and thirty-day opportunity to cure. I just have a hard, I'm, I'm, the, the four years is a lot longer than I, I thought. I'm going, just going to have to get my head around it.
May I make some suggestion?
Sure.
So what I'm hearing is that this is another thing that needs to be fixed and to amend my motion to resolve this issue regarding, or come back with a resolution to the issue regarding Section thirteen.
Sure. Can I just make a comment about that?
Well, I need to get the second to agree. Okay. So the second has agreed.
Second.
All right, that
That you address, that you give us
To address Section thirteen.
Yeah. Section thirteen, the termination clause.
What direction?
And that's what we're
Yes. How about that?
This will be something that will have to be worked out with Love of the Game.
Well, so here's, the thing about it is, everyone has raised some great points. I mean, Counselor Reed raised some great points, Mr. Lawyer raised some great points. I just need to get my head around it. So if you could work it out with, for the Love of the Game, and see if there's any, if, if there's something creative. But if there isn't, then I guess there isn't, and I'm just going to have to get my head around it. But I'm just having a hard time. Four years seems like an awfully long time.
If I may, Madam Mayor?
Mr. Johnson?
So the motion currently doesn't include that. I, I would guess
They dismand it.
the mover in the second would, to, to clarify the change, would be to direct the city attorney to work with the manager on possible, possibly addressing that section.
Yes.
In a general. Okay.
That has been
I got it.
Yes.
Does the mover in the second agree with that?
Yes, we do.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you. Counselor President Smith. You good? Counselor Herrera, on the, the motion regarding bringing back with those two corrections. Okay. Counselor Reed?
Um, just in terms of the termination, it just seems fair to me if, if one side has two years, that the other side has two years. You know, that both parties, you know, have equal time to make things work and to figure things out. And so that's, that's why I, that's kind of why I was thinking the way I was earlier. So, but other than that, I, I am in support of this motion in terms of just getting that hammered out.
Thank you. Counselor Kohler.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just to clarify, the, the motion is saying that we agree with it except for these things to work out, or are we saying we're going to put it on pause to work a bunch of stuff out?
Neither. The motion says to, for staff to come back with the two changes regarding clarification on capital improvements and the associated ADA, and to work out the language on Section thirteen.
So basically, when they come back with those things, we're going to have a, a discussion again whether or not to pass it.
Correct. The finalized contract will come back to us for approval.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Does anybody need to have the motion restated?
Could you restate it quickly, please? Sorry about that. Could you restate that, please?
Ms. Davis, would you assist with that?
I will try.
Thank you.
Mayor Clark moved to direct staff to work out the language regarding capital improvements and the ADA requirements that go with them, being the responsibility of the city, but in partnership with Love of the Game. That was the first one.
And?
And then
Stand by.
Added, sorry, get down on the screen so I can read that. Then adding that to the motion that you will, that the city attorney will come back with language to resolve for a resolution with Section thirteen.
Yes. Is that close? Mr. Johnson?
Resolve might be strong, but we will try to address it.
All right. Thank you. Yes, Counselor Herrera.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So basically, just like you told Counselor Kohler that this is just to come back with, not to actually approve this.
Correct. It's to come back with those, those
Okay.
Those, those two issues worked out and ready for approval.
So basically, we're putting this, the actual approval on hold until we come back with that?
With those, yes, because those have to be
I'm good with that.
Okay. Those, and if, if there's something else, because you said there were issues and questions that you had, and clarification of those, now is the time.
I'm going to wait.
Okay. So those are the two issues that have been identified for clarification, to make sure that we are fair with Love of the Game and for the city of Kaiser. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, signify by saying no.
No.
Motion passes six-one. The no is Counselor Kohler. All right. Thank you very much. It is past nine o'clock. I know some people have been sitting for a while. I'd like to take a ten-minute recess. We will reconvene at nine twenty. like to take a 10-minute recess, we will reconvene, um, at nine twenty.
So, the matter before council is to adopt the attached resolutions as I indicated. Then after, if there's no questions on those, after that to consider the matter of the waiver of fees and make a minute motion to formalize your intent. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions on the staff report? Okay, yeah, Councilor Day?
I would just like to point out, and I think this is on page, let me find it again, 40 of our packet, description of the event, parade of lit floats, celebrating the holiday season. Now, lit could mean several things.
Literature.
Sure.
There we go. Okay. Literature floats. Thank you very much. All right, Council President Smith, now put the first motion on the table for us, please.
Yes, I move the Kaiser City Council, Adopt Resolution R 2021, authorizing a temporary suspension of the ordinance prohibiting street vendors.
Second? It's been moved and seconded that the Kaiser City Council, Adopt Resolution R 2021, authorizing a temporary suspension of the ordinance prohibiting street vendors. Discussion. All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed, signify by saying no. Motion passes unanimously. Council President Smith?
I move the Kaiser City Council, Adopt Resolution R 2021, authorizing temporary use as subject to conditions for Jingle Dash 5K Run Walk and Kaiser Holiday Lights Parade 2021.
Second? It's been moved and seconded that the Kaiser City Council, Adopt Resolution R 2021, authorizing temporary use as subject to conditions for Jingle Dash 5K Run Walk and Kaiser Holiday Lights Parade 2021. Discussion. All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed, signify by saying no. Motion passes unanimously. Okay, on the matter of waiving the fees, Council President Smith, you want to put a motion on the table on waiving the fees for the...
Yeah, I move Kaiser City Council, waive the fees for the Jingle Dash.
Second? Said, said, on a Jingle Dash, the whole thing.
Oh, Jingle Dash 5K Run Walk and Kaiser Holiday Lights Parade 2021.
No. Second? It's been moved and seconded that the Kaiser City Council, waive the fees for the Jingle Dash 5K Run Walk and the Kaiser Holiday Lights Parade. Discussion. And for the record, I believe this was included in our budget this year. It is, I'm getting a head nod from our finance director.
That is correct.
All right, thank you. All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed, signify by saying no. Motion passes unanimously. That takes us to item 8C, Resolution Establishing the Community Engagement Committee and Resolution Dissolving the Community Diversity Engagement Work Group. City Manager?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and again, the city attorney has prepared the staff report on this. Our finance director, Mr. Wood, who is involved with the committee, may also want to weigh in as well.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you, Wes, Madam Mayor and Council. At the work session, council directed to staff to go back and revise the resolution based on the direction at that. I took the mayor's notes, which were better than my notes, I think, and it appeared to be appropriate, I added the purpose and also the tasks, which we normally don't see in these types of resolutions, but was discussed by council at that work session. And you can see that as the exhibit to the resolution, purpose and tasks listed there. And so that is before you tonight to take action as you deem fit, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. Would like to point out that once those notes were sent out, I sent them to all of city council, asking for your input on those to get that either to myself or to Mr. Johnson. So with that, the first item is to establish the Community Engagement Committee. So unless, are there any questions on the staff report? So.
I will point out, I meant to do so, it's in the staff report, there's also a follow-up resolution to dissolve the work group after that.
Okay, thank you very much. So if we're ready, let's put a motion on the table to deliberate. Council President Smith?
I move the Kaiser City Council, Adopt Resolution R 2021, Establishing the Community Engagement Committee.
Second? It's been moved and seconded that the Kaiser City Council, Adopt Resolution R 2021, Establishing the Community Engagement Committee. Discussion. Council Herrera, I'll go to you first. Do you have anything else?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just wanted on the record that I agree, I would love to have said, like I said in my last, I would love to have had the words diversity or some kind of inclusion on the committee. I feel like without those words, it sounds like equity light, it sounds almost like your heart's not really, not really in it. I really feel that messaging has to fit the, the, the name has to fit the mission, and I don't think it really does, but that's something that I guess they can work on after they establish it. But I do want to continue with our progress here. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you very much. Council Reed?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I agree, as we sort of evolved in this process, and you know, we got some good, good input in our written communications this week also, but just, I was trying to remember why we went from the original Community Diversity Engagement Group and to the, or from Community Diversity Engagement Group to the Community Engagement Committee, and I couldn't really follow that logic, other than we were trying to perhaps get a broader umbrella to help, to engage this committee in, in helping the council to achieve their goals related to community engagement. But the other purpose of this is to put into action the Justice Equity Diversity and Inclusion Resolution that we passed, and so I would agree that we at least put the diversity piece back into Community Diversity Engagement Committee, and then, because I think, as Council Herrera points out, it does reflect the purpose and the tasks more accurately, and I think that is more in line with what we had intended.
Okay, so I'd like to go back to Council Herrera, would you like to make that as a friendly amendment?
Uh, yeah, I brought that up before, and I was kind of outvoted, but if everybody was agreeing then, I would really like that.
Well.
So I would like to so, change the name to whichever, you know, the original name was Diversity, what was the original name, Kim, that you used? The word diversity was in it.
Community Diversity.
Community Diversity. Even that would be good, because it says the word diversity is, is in it, and I really would like to see that continuing, so change it back to Diversity and Inclusion.
So.
Diversity.
Engagement.
Engagement Committee? Is that the way?
Community Diversity Engagement.
That sounds familiar to me, because it says diversity.
So, is your friendly amendment for establishing Community Diversity Engagement Committee?
Right.
Okay.
Community Diversity Engagement.
Is that, that the friendly amendment?
Yes, that would be, huh, with the word diversity. Yes, ma'am, thank you.
I'll look at the mover.
Nope.
That's fine. I'll look at the second?
Yes.
Okay, it is amended, to change the name of the committee to Establishing the Community Diversity Engagement Committee. Further discussion? I'll move down. Council President Smith?
Just as a side note on this, as we were discussing earlier, thank you, Madam Mayor, this is, it's been different between different cities, and one of the goals in my head, whether or not we all share, is going to be seen, but is again, to go back and review this like once every six months, so that we can make sure we're doing what we've intended to do and not, not lose track of that. The, different cities approach this in different manners, like for example, the city of Beaverton, they call it the Community Services and Engagement Committee, and then underneath there, they have a different, they have a different one, it's called the Cultural Inclusion Committee, and then they have like Community Gardens. And Wilsonville has the Committee for Citizen Involvement, and then underneath that, then they have a separate DEI group, so I guess it's kind of just depending on which way we want to go. My eyes, I thought that the, because it's kind of the lens in which we've adopted to go forward, it would be, it's kind of sits over all of the different committees, from parks to arts to all those things, is, is that we're always looking at those things, and I believe that's actually in here, you worded it very nicely, to make sure that we're working with the other groups, and I just want to make sure we, we do that, that we have that opportunity to have them work together to, to put those things in there. And every city's going to be just kind of, you know, set up differently, but I think that that was the overarching perspective on this.
Okay. Thank you very much. Councilor Day?
My concern, here goes that promise I made myself earlier tonight, my concern is that this is going to become the Smelly Hot Dog Face Committee. And what I mean by that is, there unfortunately are people in this community who like to call people names, racist, homophobe, bigot, all these other things. I'm a victim of one of those folks. Other members of this council are a victim of those folks. They don't try to divide or engage, what they try to do is divide and destroy, and they're exclusive. My concern about this committee, even using the word diversity, is that the people who are on this committee, whoever they are, are going to be, are going to use their position, and I talked to Council President Smith about this, which means I'm a little surprised that you agreed to this. I'm afraid that those people are going to get on the committee and then use their position as committee members, whether in an official capacity or an unofficial capacity, to start calling people names again. Because we've seen, when we went through the resolution, we saw that happen. That's my concern. The first time somebody looks cross-eyed at somebody, the first time somebody, you know, doesn't hold the door open for somebody, my concern is one of these committee members is going to feel like they have the authority to go out, write a letter to the editor, which we know are Kaiser Times, which is the lightning rod of divisiveness in this community, is going to publish, much the same way they did to me in March of this year, where somebody wrote a letter to the editor alleging I was a domestic abuser. My concern, to the point, I just want to make this clear too, to the point where my kids got text messages from their friends asking them they were safe in my house, those are the idiots, those are the people.
Thank you.
Who divide this community. And my concern is, the people on this committee are going to be the ones, and we all know who they are, are going to be on, the ones on the committee who are going to go out there and call people names. And it's unfortunate, nobody should have to deal with that. But unfortunately, we have some people who do. And even crossing that line, some people say, well, you know, why would you worry about being called racist if, if you're not a racist? I'm not a racist, but once you're called a racist, that stain doesn't come off your name. Once you're called a homophobe, despite all the things I've done for that community, you can't get rid of it. So I have legitimate concerns about this. And the question I have for all of you is, if you do this, and what happens, which is what I think is going to happen, to a private citizen, not one of us who are up here, that people seem to think that we can be called names just because we've been elected and we volunteer up here, but a private citizen is called a racist, or a homophobe, or a bigot, or whatever you call sexist, whatever you want to call it, what are you guys going to say to that person?
Well, I didn't see this coming.
So Councilor Day, one of the things I would like to direct everyone to is the, the charge of this committee, and the outcomes that we are expecting from the group of nine to produce. They have deliverables, they have objectives, no individual on that committee, just like on city council, can act individually. We do, because we are individuals, but the authority is with the council. The committee is being charged with being advisory to council regarding the objectives we set out here in increasing the participation in removing barriers to that participation in civic activity, and that's specific to the city.
Yeah.
Also with being a convener when it all possible for other community conversations, but we have no authority over other civic groups or other individuals. However, the, the tasks that we are charging this group with are very specific. If people want to act outside of that scope, that is not part of what this is about, and that is not something that either the committee or, quite frankly, this council.
As a member of the Community Diversity Engagement Committee, I think so-and-so is a racist.
Well, and that's...
We just bestowed upon them.
I understand.
The veil of credibility of the city.
Right, and they cannot speak on behalf of the committee any more than any one of us can speak on behalf of the council. And if somebody starts doing that, then we will be having a conversation with that individual that they, that is outside the scope. They cannot represent that comment as being representative. It's just like all of our other committees, we can't, we don't have other parks or planning people speaking on behalf of the entire committee.
But it's different in the sense that we don't have somebody, somebody from the Parks Committee isn't going to go on somewhere and say, so-and-so is anti-parks.
I, well, I understand that, the other part is going to be the selection of the committee through the Volunteer Coordinating Committee.
Well, look, I understand that, and we tend to just rubber stamp that. My point to this is, for everyone else who wants to support this, what are you going to tell the first person, somebody on that Community Diversity Engagement Committee, somebody uses their official position to write a letter to the Kaiser Times accusing somebody of being a domestic abuser, or a homophobe, or whatever, what are you going to say? A private individual comes in here and says, so-and-so used his or her official position as a member of this committee, and now my name is tarnished, and I didn't do anything wrong. What are you going to say to that person?
What am I going to say to that? Well, the person who does that, they're acting outside the scope of that committee or any committee, when somebody does, takes an action along those lines, and that is not what this is about. And using this as a platform to cause harm to people in our community is not what this is about either. So that is, the council has the authority to remove that position, that person from the committee.
Well, that...
Because they're acting outside of scope.
But once that, so...
I understand, once it's said, it's said.
Yes. And what do you tell that person whose reputation has been damaged, whose good name has been damaged?
I, I'm going to back up a little bit, and part of this is going to be the appointment of people who understand, respect, and want to work toward the objectives here. If somebody wants to get on that committee with, for some reason other than that, then they're looking at the wrong place to whatever their, that individual's agenda is. We're going to have the Volunteer Coordinating Committee talking with these folks, we're going to have us as the second layer.
What?
The Volunteer Coordinating Committee.
What?
That's what I was trying to explain to you.
The Volunteer Coordinating Committee is, we rubber stamp what they say.
Well, I'm going to press pause on that one, and we do have the final say.
Okay.
So whether or not we agree or disagree on the selection, on the recommendations of the Volunteer Coordinating Committee, it is going to go through that body, and then it goes through us. But the individuals that we hope are going to turn their application in and be forwarded to us with recommendation from the Volunteer Coordinating Committee are going to be people who want to engage in the process that we have identified here, which is collaboration with the council committees and commissions, collaboration with other organizations, collaboration with community opportunities for conversation, celebration, and relationship building, recommendations for how we can observe national, you know, observances and so forth, and help us develop metrics. Impugning the character, motivation, or anything about individuals is not part of their scope any more than is part of the scope of this council.
Do you think this is going to stop them? You, you've seen what these people have done over, you've been a victim yourself for the last two years. Do you really think this is going to stop them?
It depends on who the, them we're talking about. If it's the people of this committee, then I will not have done my job as a member of this council to help in the process of selecting people who are going to help this community develop the steps toward achieving these goals. These are the tasks that we are setting forward, and if the committee is going to go a different direction, it is up to us as the council to work with that committee to make sure they stay on task and within scope. No committee in this, in this city, the council does not have the authority ever to use our position to impugn the character, motivation of any individual. Yes, we have, we've had some very difficult and negative interactions, and we have to make sure that with something like this, we make that a thing of the past, that we are intentional, and that the people who are recruited to be a part of this and partner with us as members of this committee, help us move toward the accomplishment of these tasks and these goals, and help us keep, we will help them keep on task to bring us these deliverables. That's what we're going to be asking that, that group to do, that is why this is even being established, because it's a, a job that when we were doing the, uh, the development of the Statement of Values for Justice Equity Diversity Inclusion, it became extremely clear that this was larger than what we, as a body of seven, could, could accomplish by ourselves. We needed additional help, just like with parks, planning, and other work that we do, it is way more than what we, this, this group of seven can accomplish. There are some tasks that are going to be extremely helpful toward the ongoing development of this city and this community, and if this task, this group helps advise us, and that's what they are, advisory, in taking proactive steps, then we will have done our job and they will have done their job.
Okay, so let me ask you this, after your filibuster.
Thank you. I can filibuster.
Are you committing, then, the first time somebody does this, that you will join me in kicking them off the committee?
If a person acts outside of their scope in imputing...
No, I'm not, I'm asking you a real simple question. If somebody from the committee goes out and writes a letter to the editor and calls somebody a name, calls any one of us a name, are you going to come, join with me in having that person immediately removed from the committee? That's, it's a simple yes or no question. I don't want you to qualify it or condition it. If you will, then I'll vote for this. But if you won't, if you can't answer yes, then I'm not voting for this, because it tells me what's really going on here, which is, we're creating this Smelly Hot Dog Face Committee.
I've gotten interested in the smelly hot dogs. What I'm interested in is, in these tasks being accomplished by that committee, if a person uses their position...
Yes or no? It's real simple.
I will, I will support removing somebody who, who does, acts outside of their scope and uses their position to impugn the character of anybody in this community, not just us.
Does everybody on this council agree to that?
Yeah.
Okay, well, as long as that's what's going to happen, because I can promise you, there's going to be a Trojan horse, there's going to be somebody who's going to get on the commission, committee, who's going to go out there and it's going to, is going to use their position to attack someone, because we've seen it over the last two years. We've seen people say horrible, terrible things about, about councilors, about elected officials.
There's been a lot of that in the community, I will agree.
Absolutely horrible things, for both, for both, for not only me, but I know Council Herrera has received a lot of horrible, horrible, awful, terrible things. We all have, and it's time for it to stop, but forgive me, I don't think it will. I mean, we had somebody, we have somebody, I still, to this day, can't believe that that letter to the editor was printed in the Kaiser Times. It was absolutely horrible, not a single person here publicly condemned it. That's why, not a single person on this council said publicly, called out the Kaiser Times. That's why, excuse me, Madam Mayor, I don't believe it. Not a single person here said, you know what, that letter to the editor was out of bounds. Not a single person said that, nobody here. So you'll forgive me if I don't believe you, because I think I've got, I've got a reason to be pretty angry. Many of us on this council do. So I don't think it'll happen, but if you all said tonight that you will, I'll vote for this. Well, you didn't stand up for me before, none of you did.
You're right.
I thought that.
Well...
And, you know, things have been said about Council Herrera, I agree.
Since I'm talking about it, I'll just say this, Lyndon Zites promised me he would apologize, and he never did, which makes him a liar.
Well, I'm not going to impugn his...
Well, I will, because he told me he would print an apology, and he never did.
Well, that's, that's getting off, off track. I will, I want to do, want to concentrate on what we're trying to accomplish here, and Council Herrera, I'll come to you in just a second, if that's all right? And for not standing up for you or any other community member who has had their, their name dragged in, through the mud on a regular basis, Council Herrera, you know this extremely Councilor Day, you have been the victim of that as well. But isn't that the reason to put a stop to it?
Yeah, you're right. It is the reason to put a stop to it. My problem is, I don't believe that a stop, that, I can guarantee you, as sure as I'm sitting here, I'm not on Facebook anymore, because I don't like to see that garbage, but I can guarantee you, the same people who said all the horrible things about me and about others on this council are going to run clips on Facebook. Thank God I'm not on Facebook anymore, I really couldn't care less, other than the fact that when my kids get text messages from their friends, it's horrible. There are people that are part of, that support the person who wrote that, who have never, who, who have never condemned what he wrote. It's just horrible. And to hear the things people say about me, I just, or about anyone, it's just terrible. It's, and I have no faith, none, in the Kaiser Times, because we know, we know what they're about, and it's very, I will emphasize, it is a very small segment of our community, but unfortunately, they have the Kaiser Times, they have the Kaiser Times to parrot everything they say.
Council Herrera?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, Madam Mayor. I, I don't know how we got into this, but in the last 15, 20, with all due respect, Councilor Day, I don't think, I have more faith in having a committee, and the last thing I worry about, them going around calling somebody racist. I mean, and I, I understand being called, I, I, I can sympathize with you as far as name-calling all that, I get my share of it, you've heard me get emotional about it before, and I'm done with that stuff. You know, I really have more faith in our committee and, and what we're messages, and I think we've gone way out in this last 15 minutes, honestly. I mean, this is, this is crazy. I mean, we're trying to get a committee here, and you just proved the point why we need this. I mean, I, I don't understand how you went from trying to use the word diversity to people name-calling you and calling you racist, I don't, I don't get that. I, I feel like we can do a really good work here if we get the right people, I don't think we get people in this committee that are going to be calling people racist. I mean, I, I don't see that. I don't...
That's because they're not calling you a racist. That's because they're not calling...
I'm going to press pause right here. I'm going to press pause. Council Herrera has the floor.
And I, and I, I'll try not to drag it on, but I, I mean, I just don't get how we got to that, from trying to get a, the word diversity and inclusion or something into that. I don't see it that way, and it tells me something, it really does, it gives me a peek into your soul in terms of how you believe this, and it doesn't...
What does that mean?
Well, it tells me how you feel. I mean, you don't, you don't, you don't have faith in this committee, because you think automatically they're going to be calling you racist. That's a furthest thing from my mind.
Well, maybe from your mind.
But Council Herrera has the floor.
No, that's, that's just how I feel, and I'm not trying to argue, sir, Council, I'm not trying to argue, we disagree, okay? I mean, I just believe that this committee is, is ready to do good work, we get the right people in there, people that care, but I don't think these people would be calling people racist, and they'd be writing those letters to the editor, and, I mean, trust me, I, I just feel like that's how I feel, maybe that's how I approach it, but that's my two cents, and I think then carrying on and on about Kaiser Times and all that, to me, that's irrelevant, and I want us to do good work with our committee, and I would like to work diversity in it, because it means something, and this extra stuff is, is irrelevant, has nothing to do with what this committee's mission is going to be, and what I believe we should be doing, so. And with all due respect, Councilor, I just, I think it's... And with all due respect, Counselor, I just, I think it's, uh, I don't think that's necessary at this point. So that's my two cents. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you very much. I'm going to go to Counselor Duran, who has not had a chance to weigh in at this point.
I actually have something to say. I wanted to point out, in the resolution, line 13, it says the city council to, the city council to form a Community Diversity Engagement Committee. So it's in there. It's, it's in the resolution, as we've already decided to add. And then I wanted to talk about how we select this committee. I would like to make it a council appointment like the Volunteer Coordinating Committee. So we each have a direct appointee that we talk with, instead of the Volunteer Coordinating Committee selecting them. So I feel that my appointee to the Volunteer Coordinating Committee, I have a direct connection. When I want to talk to them about who they're, you know, who they're looking at selecting, I would like this person to be a direct extension of me to talk about what I want to talk about through this committee.
That's a, um, so in the current resolution, uh, we are putting the resolution at the moment, puts us through the Volunteer Coordinating Committee, just like we do every other committee. So by changing this process to being direct appoint, um, seven members appointed by the city councilors would be a significant change from how we've done all the other committees and commissions.
And I won't vote for this the way it is now, yet, so.
I'm not going to. I, I don't think that's an unreasonable.
Counselor Day, Counselor Duran has the floor.
So.
Sorry.
That, those were my comments.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, where have I, have I lost track? Did everybody get through? I know, uh, hang on just a second. Did I start with?
Started with Elizabeth.
Okay, no, I haven't circled, have I circled all the way around?
I didn't know you started with me.
All right.
Then I slept through it.
No, you didn't sleep through it. I don't think everybody slept through anything in the last 25 minutes.
So I think my question was answered by Kyle, by Counselor Duran. Because my question was if we vote, if we were to support this and vote yes for this, are we supporting the way that we, the members of the committee are appointed? And my understanding is from what you just said, that if we vote yes currently, that would mean that this would go through the VCC to have those. And, and I would much rather see it a direct appointment like the VCC members.
Good. So that would be something that, when we put a motion on the table, if somebody wants to, um, vote on an amendment to that change, we can have that conversation.
Okay.
On that, and then we can vote on it separately. And then on the entire, um, process, or in the entire resolution.
That, that's fine. Because I have no problem having a committee put together. And I think that there's some great work that a committee can be done. But if we wait for the VCC to do it, it'll be January at minimum before they can even meet. Where if we do a direct appoint, we can figure out who the members of that committee are next week, and, and, excuse me, next council meeting in two weeks. And we can start the work on, on getting some good things done.
Okay. Um, are we ready to put a motion on the table to deliberate? Counsel, Ms. Davis?
There is already a motion.
Oh, that's right. Okay, it is deliberation. I, like I said, I lost track.
With an amendment with the new name.
With the name, okay. Thank you for reminding me where we're at. I absolutely got sidetracked. So that would be then if, um, is that a friendly amendment that you want to propose, Counselor Duran?
I would like to propose that as a friendly amendment, that we select them as a council appointment.
Okay, that would go to the mover to accept.
I accept.
Second, would you accept that?
Second, I, I would like to talk about it, but yes.
Well, no, if you accept it, it's in.
Okay.
So you can say no, then we can.
It can be in, but I still want to deliberate the motion as, as discussed. I mean, yes, with, with this new friendly amendment on the table. So yes, I accept.
Okay, hang on. So if you accept that, it, that makes it part of the motion, that we are changing the process to being direct appoint, what each counselor doing an appointment to the committee?
Yes, and we're still deliberating though, yes?
With the whole thing, that would become part of the entire deliberation? Not that one?
Yep.
Okay. It's been accepted by the mover and second. So the motion as a, the, rewind, slow down. The motion at this time is for us to adopt the resolution to establish the Community Diversity Engagement Committee and that the city councilors each appoint and a member to the committee. Further discussion, Counselor Reed.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So I, I, I have a bit of a concern about the, the direct appointment, because these appointments are supposed to be for four years. Our appointments to the Vol- Volunteer Coordinating Committee are only two years and allows for a little bit more flexibility in terms of, um, you know, who is on that committee. I'm a little worried that this becomes, you know, already we have the direct appointment to the, the Volunteer Coordinating Committee and therefore have, you know, something of a say in that process. Um, so for me, I, um, I, I'm not, I, I just, I worry a little bit about that four-year appointment, because that is the entire tenure of a city counselor.
Are you suggesting a remedy, or are you okay with the four years? Which it sounds like you're not.
Um, I'm trying to remember what we discuss, okay. Mr. Johnson has something.
I'm going to go to Mr. Johnson.
A correction, if I may, Madam Mayor.
Yep.
I think it says, "The non-counselor member shall be appointed for a three-year term."
Three years, okay, thank you.
Okay.
Okay, um, I, I'm just trying to remember what, what we discussed in there and why we went for the three years rather than the two years, because I'm sure we discussed that. And, um, I.
I don't, I don't think, I think that's just a.
It's fairly common in the committees, and they're staggered.
Right.
That's how it is on Planning Commission.
Okay.
I, I think the other committees are like that too.
Yeah, pretty standard.
I would say if we're going to go for a direct appoint, that we limit that to two years. I'd make a friendly amendment to, um, to change that appointment to two years.
I'm looking at Council President Smith.
I accept that.
Now, can she accept her own friendly amendment? Mr. Johnson?
I'm sorry, Madam Mayor.
Counselor Reed wants to do a friendly amendment, but she is the second.
The, the second is making a friendly amendment?
Yes.
There's no prohibition on that.
Okay. Counselor Herrera.
For clarification, uh, the, as it stands right now, you're saying that each one of us will pick a person for that? How will we ensure that it would be a diverse commu-, uh, a committee? How do we assure that we have diversity on a committee?
Because that's our objective. That's, that's what we're going to shoot. That, that's our objective. That's what we're going to be shooting for, is for diversity.
Right, because I, I, I'm comparing it to the Volunteer Coordinating Committee. The people that are diverse people have been picked by, pretty much by just a couple of us. And, and I want to make sure that our committee is diverse, you know? Uh, all my representatives have been female and people of color, usually. And, uh, because I want people to be, you know, to have a say, you know, different, different perspectives.
You're saying I can't pick somebody that's of color?
Well, Mike McGowan was our first one, because I was looking for somebody.
Yeah.
Well, fine. Oh, boy.
So we have the opportunity.
Okay, I just want to make sure that our committee is diverse. I'm the only person of, of color up here, so I was thinking along those terms, you know? I just want to make sure that it isn't a committee of diverse folks.
And some of us are mixed, so we want to make sure that.
All right.
Clarification as well. And I did appoint the first Latino to that committee, by the way. Counselor Kohler.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. It's been such a long time here. I'm a member of the.
Yeah, I know.
I was going to say. Couple of things, if, if we do the amendment that Counselor Reed just talked about, does that mean that if I have one year left on my term, that we would, that those would be placed on this committee at the same time that the VCC members are direct appointed? Is that what we're saying? So that, for example, a year from now, a little over a year from now, I would, somebody else would be appointing. Does that make sense?
Yeah, it does. And, and, and I have a concern about losing the continuity of the work. If we, um, if, especially with this first group, that if we do it too short a time, they don't really get the chance to dive into it and get some.
But again, that's one of the reasons that I think we should just go ahead and, and make that appointment. Because if we wait till for the VCC to do it, it's going to be at least January before they get to it. And then probably February before they can start functioning as a committee, where that, that time period would be a lot shorter if we do a direct appoint.
But if you're talking about, and of course, and we've seen on the Volunteer Coordinating Committee where somebody can pick up the appointee of the prior person.
Right.
And keep that going.
Right. And the other thing about, to, to, to address Counselor Herrera's question about the committee being diverse, I, I have no doubt that, that when we're looking at members of this committee, we're looking at that to begin with. We're not looking at necessarily somebody that is just, uh, has a certain agenda, but we're looking at somebody that's diverse that says, hey, okay, how can we help our community be better?
I know that's the, and somebody who is willing to engage in the, if I might. Any person that comes on this committee has to understand that this is the scope of the work. This is what we're asking the committee members to engage in. This is what we're asking the committee to bring to the council and to the community as recommendations for putting the, not only the Statement of Justice, Equity, Diversity, Inclusion into action, but also helping us to bring people into more meaningful engagement with the civic processes. I mean, this is specific to being involved with civic activity, our city council, our committees, our neighborhood associations, you know, things related to the operation of and delivery of services to the community. Yeah, external, I'm not talking about internal. This is, that's completely separate. It has absolutely nothing to do with, um, the internals. This is all the outward-looking and then delivery of service, the community connection. So I wanted to just be clear on that. Counselor Reed.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Another benefit of having this go, and I'm all over the place in terms of what I'm thinking about this, but one benefit in terms of having this go through the Volunteer Coordinating Committee is allows for people to step up who have an interest, who have a passion, who, um, who have a, a perspective to contribute that we might miss out on if we are just direct appointing. And, uh, so, so that, you know, I, I would like to see a pool of candidates. I think it would be a, a better thing for this group if we had a pool of candidates to choose from rather than just one selected by each of us. I, I think that limits the perspective. And the whole point of this is to broaden as much perspective, to get as many voices at the table as we can. And I think that we can do that better if we have a pool of people rather than appointed people.
Okay, you just, I'm going to back up one thing a little bit. When you accepted the friendly amendment, it accepted making the change to direct appoint. And that's what I was trying to make sure you understood.
Yes.
And you just argued against it.
Yeah, I did, because I wanted to be able to deliberate it. And so, can I withdraw that?
Yes.
No.
No, that's the problem, that's why I was trying to.
Okay, so where are we in this process?
That got accepted.
Yeah. But I, I, again, so, just on the spot, hadn't had a chance to think that through as much as.
Well, that's, that's why.
No, I know, I appreciate that.
Help me out, Mr. Johnson.
So, Madam Mayor and Counselor, if I may, I think Counselor Reed, your position, I think, has made clear to the rest of the council. You just need to choose whether this specific issue, unless somebody's going to change the motion again, if this specific issue is enough to make you vote no on it, that's all. You, you registered your concern about the particular issue. The motion is on, on the floor. Uh, so unless there's another amendment to the motion, as I understand it, the original amendment was adding the word diversity. The next amendment, as, as I recall, is an appointment, direct appointment. And then, am I clear, was the two-year accepted?
No, we didn't get that far. Oh, Tracy said we did. No, I asked about it, and we didn't complete that.
I don't, I don't know.
So may, may I? Okay.
Um.
I believe so, because you asked me if they.
Oh, I did, if, and if it would be.
Could, could we just vote on this as is and then start over? Or can I just withdraw the original motion? Does that cancel everything?
Excuse me.
Okay.
The motion.
We have, we have a motion, a second, we've got two changes that have been made. If we want to put it back to what it was, we have to have an amendment to do just that. Am I correct?
Yes.
Okay. So do we want to put it? What I'm getting is that there is a desire to put it back to Volunteer Coordinating Committee appointment. And a friendly amendment to do that can be put out. If it's accepted, it reverts it. Am I correct?
Madam Mayor, I'm sorry, I was looking at my Roberts rules, so. The question was again?
Okay, um, if there was, if there is a friendly amendment to change it back to Volunteer Coordinating Committee appointment, would that undo what got done? With adding, with changing it from Volunteer Coordinating Committee to direct appoint, if it is the desire of a counselor to amend, to put it back to the way it was, and it's accepted, would that put it back to?
If there's no objection from the council.
Right, otherwise it would then go to a vote.
Yeah, because if there's objection at this point, at this point, unless, you need, you would need it, need it without objection, so.
Understood.
You'd need to ask. If there's objection to it, then I think you need to vote down this motion if it sounds like it's voting down, and start over. But you can amend it if there's no objection.
Okay.
Counselor Reed, do you want to amend to put it back as a Volunteer Coordinating Committee appointment process?
Yes, I would like to amend as to putting back for the Volunteer Coordinating Committee process and going back to the three-year appointment.
That's, that's already in there.
Yeah.
Don't, don't, don't model me. Please.
But I object.
We have objection, so.
You need to vote on the motion as it is.
Yep.
So what we can do is vote on, if we want to make that a motion, and then we would vote on that, and then we would vote on the main motion.
That, no, Madam Mayor. I think you need to vote on this motion as is, That, no, Madam Mayor, I think you need to vote on this motion as is, because that issue is already determined and accepted.
Okay.
You're, on the same motion, you're reversing it.
Understood.
And I don't think you can do that if there's objection. So you need to vote on this motion as it is, and just to clarify, the motion is to add the word diversity, to make it a direct appointment, and to make it a two-year term. So if there's an objection to that, to try to make that change, then I think you need to vote on that and then go from there.
Understood. Do we need to repeat the motion?
Yes.
Okay, Tracy, would you assist us in repeating the motion that is on the table? And then we'll go from there.
I'm going to summarize, the motion is to adopt the resolution with adding the word diversity in the title of the committee name to make it a direct appointment by counselors for a two-year term.
That is the motion on the table. All right. So, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, signify by saying no.
No.
No, hands for no.
No.
Raise them up, please.
Nos or yes?
Nos, I said nos, hands. Counselor Smith, are you a yes or no?
I'm a no.
Is no, motion fails.
Four, three.
Three, four. The nos being Clark, Smith, Reed, and Herrera. We need a motion on the table then to start over. And we'll have to make your amendment again, Counsel Herrera, unless it's in the original, go ahead.
Okay, so are we doing the original one?
Start up, start over.
I move that the Kaiser City Council establish Resolution R 2021 establishing the Community Diversity Engagement Committee.
Can we make that change here? No, we have to...
She certainly can.
All right.
The original motion includes the word diversity, then?
Yes.
Is there a second?
Second.
It has been moved and seconded that the Kaiser City Council adopt Resolution R 2021 establishing the Community Diversity Engagement Committee. I'm afraid to ask, discussion. Duran.
I make a motion that we, a friendly motion to make it a council appointment for this.
Does the mover accept? I know we just did, but we're going to end up in the same, no. The friendly amendment is not accepted by the mover. So, Mr. Johnson.
Counselor Duran has the option to move to amend if he wishes.
All right, would you like to move to amend so we act on this separately?
The question is, friendly amendment was not accepted, but you have the right to make a formal motion to amend. If the motion to amend is seconded and voted on, then that amendment would be added.
So we need... So I'd like to make a formal motion to amend.
It's moved and seconded to amend to change the appointment process from the volunteer coordinating committee process to a direct appointment by council. Discussion on the proposed amendment. Counsel President Smith.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The question that Laura Reed, or Counselor Reed brought up regarding a pool of candidates, my question was, does that mean that then, instead of having volunteer coordinating committee interview them and push them forward, is that, could we do that as the direct appointment? Could they come to us for that particular, that way we're hitting both things, both desires to have it direct appointed? Is that, is that an option? I'm trying to find the middle...
I don't believe that's the motion.
And I understand that's not the motion, that's just a question.
The current motion would be a direct appointment similar to what VCC is...
Thank you.
Okay. Herrera, any further discussion? Okay, all in favor of the, sorry, did I miss somebody?
Madam Mayor, just to...
Mr. Johnson.
I'm sure you're about to do this, make sure the council understands this. This is just on the motion to amend only, not on the main motion.
What he said.
That's Duran's amendment.
Correct, that's all. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, signify by saying no.
No.
Hands on the nose. Okay, so it stands amended to make it a direct appoint. Okay, we now are going to vote on the main motion, Counsel, Mr. Johnson.
So, Madam Mayor, if I may, I'll cross off two, since we went back to three. But with regard to the appointment, so currently it says a citizen-at-large and youth members, members shall be appointed as outlined in the rules of procedure. So that's a change, which is allowed, by the way, in the rules of procedure. It does say there can be a different appointment method if the resolution states, so you could do that. So the language that I wrote is each counselor shall directly appoint one citizen-at-large following the same process as the appointment of the volunteer coordinating committee members. That takes care of, I think, the direct, the intent here with this amendment. The only question is the youth counselor. And I don't, you can have the city manager appoint them, or you could have the mayor appoint them. It would help, but you need to decide that one question, because that's the extra, if you will. There's, wait a minute, hey, there is a little problem here.
Mm-hmm.
Got the numbers mixed up.
Thank you.
So unlike the VCC, see, there's seven, so you have seven. I guess the only question is, who's going to appoint the youth counselor? And you don't need to handle that directly in here. There would be a, probably a likely counselor to appoint the youth member. But there's only six, there's a youth member plus six, so I have my numbers off. But if you see what I'm getting at, Madam Mayor...
Which makes sense, because the mayor appoints the two counselors.
Well, the mayor appoints the two counselors, that's not the issue. The issue is the six plus one, and I don't, now that I've talked it through, I don't think you need to decide in this motion, but there is a question about which counselor is going to appoint a youth member, if you're going to keep that, if you're going to keep the youth member.
Would you make that the mayor's appointment, but with the indulgence of the council, can we make that the youth, the mayor's appointment would be the youth council member?
Why can't the youth do it, or youth counsel?
In consultation, but I don't think she has the authority to make the appointment, but definitely can give input and make recommendation. But she's not, she's advisory, so she would definitely be advisory in making that appointment or recruiting people. But I don't think she has the authority to do that. I think it's a good idea, Counsel, but I don't think we can do that. But I would recommend, I think, making that the mayor's appointment would be quite appropriate, since the mayor also designates the two city counselors.
Okay, is there any objection?
Any objection to that? And definitely in consultation with our youth counselor. Any other changes, ideas, discussion at this point? Do we need a restatement of the motion? Okay, are all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, signify by saying no. Motion passes unanimously. Okay, resolution, the second one, on dissolving the Community Diversity Engagement Work Groups. Counsel President Smith.
I move the Kaiser City Council adopt Resolution R 2021 dissolving the Community Diversity Engagement Work Group.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the Kaiser City Council adopt Resolution R 2021 dissolving the Community Diversity Engagement Work Group with our thanks. Discussion, Counsel Kohler.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, I just want to say a special thank you to that group. They did some yeoman's work.
Absolutely agree with that. All right, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, signify by saying no. Motion passes unanimously. The Texas to Item 8D is dog, resolution authorizing the mayor to sign the cable television franchise agreement with Comcast of Oregon One, Inc. City Manager.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, I believe the city attorney has been working on this through most of his adult life.
I would agree. This has been a long...
I thought he was going to say career, but...
Oh, just now.
It's even longer, yeah. Thank you, Wes, Madam Mayor and Counsel. Yes, this has taken up a lot of time, not really adult life or even career, but the last few years at least. And before I forget, I would like to thank the Comcast representatives, Kirk Nord, who was working on this previously, and Tim Goodman, who has sat, I'm sure, very interested in the rest of our meeting.
Thanks for hanging with us, Mr. Goodman.
I will not go through the details, you can see in the staff report, I discussed some issues. This is the long time coming, when the peg fee drops and we are not able to use it for operations. I was informed by Kirk Nord of Comcast, we were one of only six in the nation who still had that old model, and that was kind of why they wanted us to change it. I appreciate their help, as well as the help of our outside counsel, Spencer Parsons, and working through those issues, and you can see the memorandum that I attached from Spencer. The matter is before you for adoption, the resolution authorizes the mayor to sign this franchise agreement to move forward with a more modern model as required under federal law. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. Questions on the staff report? Questions on the agreement? And we do have, again, thank you, Mr. Goodman, for hanging with us all evening and being available to answer questions, and also you and your company for working very closely with our city attorney on, this has been a number of years in the making, as many of us are very well aware. For those who can't hear at home, he said he wasn't born yet. Yeah, some of us are feeling the silver tsunami getting even bigger. All right, any, any questions? All right, Counsel President Smith.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, I move the Kaiser City Council adopt Resolution R 2021 authorizing the mayor to sign cable television franchise agreement with Comcast of Oregon One, Inc. Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the Kaiser City Council adopt Resolution R 2021 authorize mayor to sign cable television franchise agreement with Comcast of Oregon One, Inc. Any further discussion?
Are you sure we, are you sure we just shouldn't have something just for the sake of everybody that's still here?
No, I think we're good.
Okay.
All right, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, signify by saying no. Hearing no objection, motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Tim.
Good night, Tim.
Let's go on then to Item 8E, which is order designating no parking zone on Judas Avenue North, Kaiser, Oregon. City Manager.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, I believe Public Works Director Bill Lawyer did the staff report on this.
Thank you, Wes. Madam Mayor and Counsel, given the hours late, I'll be brief. We responded to the report of a downed no parking sign on Judas Avenue, and in researching exactly where it was supposed to go, I discovered that no parking zone apparently had never been officially authorized.
Oops.
So this recommendation is to officially authorize that no parking zone 150 feet from River Road West on the south side of Judas Avenue. Be happy to answer any questions.
All right, thank you very much, any questions, Counsel Reed.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, just, there are a couple of activities in that plot of land, one being Christmas Tree Lot, and the other being the McNary Band. Firework stand has been there the past couple of years, and the McNary Band can drive. So there are some, some different activities that go on in that periodically throughout the year, and a lot of people park there during those activities. So I'm just wondering if, is that a site issue? Why was that designated a no parking zone to begin with?
It was designated no parking zone to begin with because of people parking there, walking across the street, going to the bank, and then backing out onto Judas, creating a traffic hazard for people coming onto Judas or leaving Judas, okay? I've thought about the Christmas Tree Lot, thought about the fireworks stands. Those are complaint-driven items. So if nobody complains while the Christmas tree stand is there, it doesn't affect a no parking, so...
And, Madam Mayor, if I may?
Hang on, yeah, go ahead, Counsel Reed.
And to be clear, there are, you know, looking at that picture, there are two other parking lots that people could use, but I would just, you know, maybe make the recommendation that people, you know, like, put an actual, physical something there, you know, one of those crime scene tapes or something like that, just during those, because, yeah, all right.
We can, we can certainly, I can work with, I believe those lots have to get a temporary business license or approval for those. I can work with Shane on establishing, ribbiting of that area to discourage people from parking there.
Yeah. Mr. Withem?
And I would just add that, yes, when the, when the Christmas Tree Lot or McNary Band boosters come in, they do obtain a temporary use permit, and part of that is a site plan that shows where their business will be located. I believe, you know, it used to be owned by the church, but I believe that law is now owned by the V2 dentistry folks, if I remember right. So what we could do is with the temporary use permit, require that the applicant obtain, I mean, the temporary use permit has to be signed by the property owner. So the property owner would essentially have to sign off on them being able to utilize that parking lot area for their temporary use, and we could regulate it that way.
Thank you.
And also, I was going to mention, this was brought up by the owner of the V2 dentistry when we were meeting there for the next item on the agenda. And he informed me at that time that they actually own the property the parking lot for the church is on.
Oh, really?
Yes, and a portion of, a portion of the parking lot on the northern side of the church property is actually on property owned by V2 dentistry.
Do they have like an agreement?
They have an agreement.
Okay, yeah, that's how it works, okay.
But that was something I didn't know beforehand.
Oh.
But it plays into this ability for people to use that to park for the Christmas tree, the fireworks, that kind of stuff, because the same owner that's going to allow them to use their property for the stand owns the parking lot.
That sounds like it's a lot more efficient that way.
Yes.
Fantastic, and safer.
Yes.
Okay, any further comments, questions? Counsel President Smith.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, I move the Kaiser City Council adopt an order designating no parking zone on Judas Avenue North, Kaiser, Oregon. Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the Kaiser City Council adopt an order designating no parking zones on Judas Avenue North, Kaiser, Oregon. Further discussion? Counsel Kohler?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, I was just concerned when I first read through these two things, that I wondered if, how big the public art sculpture was, if we needed the no parking zone for that, but it looks like we're okay.
Well, everyone's going to want to pull over and look at it, it's going to be beautiful, but they can pull in the parking lot, so there we go, and be safe. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, signify by saying no. Motion passes unanimously. Let's go to the art. All right, Item F, location approval for the public art sculpture, City Manager.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, our city attorney once again has been responsible for the staff work on this.
Thank you, Wes, Madam Mayor and Counsel. As many of you may know, but the K-PAC, Kaiser Public Arts Commission, chooses artwork, but new locations for the public art program are approved by council. And in connection with this issue with the property that Bill was just referring to, the dentist's property there, K-PAC has recommended, and the dentist has agreed to allow a newly rehabbed Iron Glory to be placed at that location. And so the recommendation, we do not do this by formal motion, but the recommendation is to make a minute motion approving the location as set forth in the staff report. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much, any questions on the staff report? Counsel President Smith.
I move that the council approve the location at Judas and River Road shown on the attached drawing for public art. Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the Kaiser City Council approve the location at Judas and River Road as shown on the attached drawing for public art. Any further discussion? Now it works, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed, signify by saying no. Motion passes unanimously. Well, there we go. It came back. Counsel President Smith, would you please read the items on tonight's consent calendar?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, yes, we have A, Resolution Authorization for Disposition of Police Service Dog Buster; B, Resolution Amending the Resolution Authorizing the Interim City Manager to Purchase Two 2021 Black Dodge Durango SXTEWD Vehicles to the Police Department, Amending Resolution Number R 2021-3203; C is the Approval of the October 4th 2021 Regular Session Minutes; D is Approval of the October 11th 2021 Work Session Minutes; and E is the Approval of October 18th 2021 Regular Session Minutes.
Thank you very much, any polls? Looking, looking, looking. See, no polls, Counsel President Smith.
I move that the Kaiser City Council adopt the Consent Calendar Items A through E.
Second.
The Consent Calendar Items A through E have been moved and seconded. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, signify by saying no. Motion passes unanimously. Other business, as time is provided to allow the mayor, city council members, or staff an opportunity to bring new or old matters before the council that are not on tonight's agenda. Are there any other items of business for this evening? Okay, staff updates then, are there any staff updates?
We'll have some really exciting ones on Friday.
Okay, do tell.
I was...
Oh, the, thank you, my brain's pretty fried. Oh, that's right, you do the weekly update.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Which, by the way, the idea from Counsel President Smith to take some of that and put that on our Facebook page has been very well received, so thank you, city staff members for contributing to the weekly update and for getting that posted online to get it out to the community. I think that's been a great add. Ms. Davis, do you have any updates this evening?
I do not, thank you.
Mr. Wood?
Please continue to save water, that's it.
All right, I share it on my Facebook page, too. Counsel Kohler?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, Mr. Wood was going to ask you a question about Little League inventory.
You had sent an email over the weekend wanting to know the status of the transition from the old Kaiser Little League to For Love of the Game. At this point, we haven't done a whole heck of a lot. We do have the original listing of assets from the previous agreement, and all of those are still there, and we're looking at to see if there's anything that's been added. And it looks like at this point, I believe, there's been a couple of dugouts, I believe, that have been added. But much beyond that, we have not done much additional work yet.
Yeah, two months ago, I talked to you about doing an inventory, and that's the reason I wanted to follow up on it.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Madam Mayor, if I may.
Mr. Lawyer?
On that topic, Counsel Kohler, all of the stuff in the complex, equipment, maintenance tools, all of that, the city has only purchased one and a half mowers. Everything else is, belongs to, I believe, the Little League organization. Nothing else up there was bought with city money. Does that help your inventory question?
So the question that I have, then, moving forward, is all of the equipment that's there could disappear, and the Love of the Game would have to go buy all new equipment?
That is possible, except for the mowers.
Thank you very much.
Chief. Mr. Withem?
Uh, no, I have nothing tonight.
All right. Mr. Lawyer?
Nothing more, thank you.
Mr. Johnson?
Nothing tonight, thank you, Madam Mayor.
All right, thank you very much. Given the lateness of the hour, what's your council member reports? Give me your top one. And I'm going to start with Counsel Kohler.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I think I've said enough tonight.
I have nothing to add.
Thank you.
Yeah, I guess we're all tired.
A little bit.
I do want to mention a couple of things. I have a whole list of stuff, but I do want to mention a couple of things. We, kudos to Pastor Tom Fox of Lake Point Community Church. They had that event here for Halloween, right here at City Hall. Hundreds of people, it was great. Also, welcome to Kim Connolly, a new college and career counselor over at McNary. I had a whole bunch of meetings, but I won't talk about them. The League of Minority Voters Gala was held last Saturday, and we, the LOC sponsored a table there, and congratulations to Jim Ferraris, my good friend Jim Ferraris, former from Police Chief of Woodburn, and Steve Calley, the mayor of Hillsborough. One more thing I wanted to mention is, coming up, we have the Business Alliance. The Veterans Day is a big deal for us, because we be doing some work with veterans. Anyway, Latino Business Line next week, Gupser Neighborhood Association, and also I attended the Kaiser Community Dinner, and that was very nice. And that's pretty much all I have, actually. That's enough. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much.
Oh, one more thing, if I may.
Please.
You know, the volleyball team had won their first playoff game ever, and I thought it was interesting that the varsity GPA of volleyball team was 3.91, which is really incredible, I think. And also, the girls' soccer qualified for postseason, too, which is a good thing. Thank you very much. And the boys, by the way, will be playing South Medford Friday, first playoff game. So go, show up and support our McNary Sells.
Is that going to be at home?
That's what I understand.
Okay.
I think it is, isn't it? Do you know, Chief? Well, I'm pretty sure it is home.
All right.
So it'll be good. Thank you.
Go Sells. Counsel President Smith.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I have nothing tonight.
Counsel Day. Counsel Duran.
I have nothing.
Just one, one thing I'd like to point out is both Tuesday and Thursday of this week, the Midland Valley Homeless Alliance Executive Committee and the board will be meeting, and everybody is welcome to tune in. Those are on Zoom, and the recordings are online. And don't forget the Kaiser Community Library book sale this coming Friday and Saturday, because with our clocks going back, you need some good reads in your house to enjoy all these fall and winter evenings. And with that, agenda input, next week, we'll meet at 6 o'clock to talk about the PEG, which stands for Public Education Government Funds and Kaiser TV. On November 15th, we will meet at 7:00 PM in regular session. On the 29th, we will meet at 6:00 PM to have a work session on the Parks Master Plan. And on December 6th, 7:00 PM, we will meet in regular session, and we do have a work session scheduled for December 13th. Keep December 20th on your calendar for right now. If we don't need that meeting, we will cancel, but we're not going to cancel it just yet until we're sure. All right, anything else for the good of the order? The time is 10:38. We are adjourned.